Welcome everyone and bring our meeting to order. Um, could we, let's do a roll call. Um, to make sure we've got everybody for the record. So Counselor Deckard.
Here.
Counselor Iverson.
Here.
Counselor McKim.
Here.
Counselor Munson.
Here.
Counselor Hawke is not yet here. Okay. And Counselor Spoonmore is not here this evening. He is on a well deserved vacation. So I am uh, running the show, it seems. Um, so in the interest of moving forward, let's move to um, agenda item number two, which is the adoption of our agenda. Does anyone wish to add or remove anything from tonight's agenda? Okay, in that case, I would entertain a motion to approve our agenda.
If we approve the agenda.
Second.
Great. Can we do a roll call vote, please? Or not, maybe not, maybe we'll just Kim, can we, do we do a roll call vote for?
Yes, we do. And I was looking for Megan. Hold on just a moment, please.
Sure.
Okay, uh, in the motion to approve the agenda, Wilk.
Yes.
Deckard.
Yes.
Iverson.
Yes.
Munson.
Yes.
McKim.
Yes.
And is Hawk available?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't see her. Counselor Hawk.
She is not present.
She is not.
Thank you. Thank you. Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. Um, so now we can move to item number three, which is department updates and um, for our first update, I'd like to invite Bree Gregory to uh, give an update from the auditor's office. She's our county financial director.
Everyone, how are you tonight?
Great, how are you?
Good, thanks. Thanks for having me. Um, so I provided an email update July 15th, so I just want to be sure that everyone saw it right now. And also provided a revenue report July 23. So I'm just going to kind of give you a brief update tonight since um, most of the information was included in my email. However, I do have an update on FEMA. Um, I was able to um, touch base with um, one of the um, Homeland Security representatives helping us with our FEMA application project. And um, they acknowledged receipt of um, the three submissions for 2021. And I explained um, the discrepancy between um, the 2020 submission and reimbursement, which there was a difference between what we submitted and denied of forty-three thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars and fifty cents. So I just explained, we um, resubmitted that and asked him to please look into that. And then um, I just actually sent um, kind of like a follow-up email, just to make sure all of our accounting is in line. So the total project application, the estimated um, FEMA project application anyhow, um, the total amount of that is four hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents. So that consisted of um, expenses we knew about and then estimated future costs. So right now, um, sorry, I have a call coming in. Right now, we have um, about a hundred and fifty-five thousand, four hundred and five dollars left to submit, you know, give or take. We can um, you know, fluctuate slightly with an explanation to FEMA if we're going to go over under for any reason um, prior to project closeout. So um, that is the plan with FEMA. Um, so hoping we can get that wrapped up here in the near future. There is not an end date right now as the um, as the pandemic is still ongoing, but um, yeah, we're moving right along. So it's nice that we have actually less expenses to submit as we have more funding become available. So that is a good thing. Um, we were submitting personnel expenses for the um, testing site, the COVID testing site. However, that is actually moving forward, it seems to be covered by a CARES grant. So that is, that's just great that we have um, other money available as well. So anyhow, other than that brief FEMA update, I don't have anything further unless you have questions for me on the other updates provided.
I had muted. Thank you. And are there any questions from counsel? It looks like um, Counselor McKim?
Uh, yeah, so just on the um, on the calculations for uh, revenue loss for ARPA, i- is it the general, I I mean, I guess I want to hear this question for you, but also just for everybody else. Is it the the um, general preference that we hire a consultant to be able to to make those calculations in in keeping with standard practices on uh, on ARPA revenue loss? Or is that something that the auditor's office had been prepared to do?
Um, we are certainly capable and prepared to do um, the calculations. However, um, you know, as um, we were informed that um, there are services available. I mean, that is appealing. We're dealing with a lot of money. Um, you know, a lot of uh, more than we have um, in the past. So you know, although I'm confident that we would um, you know, do well and be able to um, contribute, we also have a small staff and a lot of projects. So you know, I mean, we we, we will definitely follow whatever your preference is in that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, Counselor Hawk has joined us. I forgot to mention that. So please, yeah, go ahead with your question.
Just wanted to make sure, uh, Councilmember McKim, that you saw the uh, new directions that came from the state just today. And I didn't have time to to read it. I just sort of saw that it came through. Um, and so I thought that might help answer some of those questions, but.
Yeah, no, I have not read them in detail.
Are there any other questions for Ms. Gregory? Well, okay then, um, I know that uh, we have another update. So thank you, Ms. Gregory, and um, we will see you again next time.
Great. Thank you. Have a wonderful night.
You too. Um, our next uh, update comes from Commissioner Lee Jones.
Good evening, counsel. Let me get my there. I I wanted to come before you tonight to discuss the administrative details of getting the study or the working group for the justice study moving forward. Um, I expect most of you noticed that it's difficult getting that many people to all be available at one time that frequently. So we did run into problems with that. Um, we also considered how the, how it should all be approached. And basically, there are three different phases that we're looking at. There are things that we can do before people ever interact with the justice system at all to keep them out of it. Then there's the part where they're in the justice system and dealing with that. And then there's the part after people are out of jail and need support to keep from ending up back in jail. Um, it's clear that the middle part while people are in jail is mostly um, um, the business of the court, the prosecutor, the public defender and the sheriff. Um, and they've been given lots of ideas to work with and have considered forming their own working group initially to kind of get their arms around what needs to be done and what approach they're going to take and the timeline and all of that. In the meantime, it seems that it might be a very good idea to create a another group that would be made up of commissioners and council. And these would be public meetings to appro- to try to get started on the recommendations that we've been given for pre justice system and post justice system. And the, in, at least the initial idea is to have meetings where we bring in various people from the public who are likely to be important and hopefully involved in some of this programming and these efforts that we're hoping to make to keep people out of the jail. Um, so anyhow, we just kind of wanted to put that notion before you, let you think about it a bit. Um, we're going to discuss it in greater detail. And hopefully um, we can come up with a plan real soon. But we just wanted to make sure you knew how we were thinking at this point. Um, and I won't elaborate any more than that because I know you have a very long agenda tonight. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Are there any other, are there any questions uh, from counsel? Well, on then, I'll just say that sounds uh, like a, a plan to move forward a little bit and um, look forward to seeing what the next steps are.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any other departmental updates? I see no hands. Okay, then we'll move to item four on the agenda. Um, which is Baker Tilly's report on the fiscal impact of annexation.
Counsel, I moved to open for a discussion and received the fiscal impact report prepared by Baker Tilly.
Hi, him.
Great, uh, thanks. And I believe we have um, Paige Sanson and Dean Rogers here from Baker Tilly. Uh, welcome and thanks for coming. And um, I assume you guys have uh, the floor and know what to do with it at this point. We're eager to hear from you.
Okay, thank you. Um, Jeff, Margie, you, you want me to just jump right into it, or do you have any introductory comments?
No, I think that um, if you guys want to just jump in, that'd be great.
Okay. Um, and would it be helpful if I share my screen, or does everyone have a copy of our submitted report?
I think if you share your screen, that'd be ideal.
Okay. Let me start that.
While he is doing that, let me just say that Baker Tilly uh, was hired by Monroe County to prepare a, a report for us, showing us what the fiscal impact is going to be to the county and townships. And also uh, to indiv- you know, some analysis about um, the impact to individual taxpayers. Um, not, you know, by name, but just sort of generally how individual taxpayers might be affected. So tonight, that's what you're going to hear.
Thank you, Margie. Yeah, I'm Dean Rogers. I'm a partner with Baker Tilly. Um, I will be kind of kicking it off and and with me is, is one of my partners, Paige Sansone, who will uh, cover many of the items as well. Um, just a, a little bit of background, I'm actually um, a, a guy that does a lot of annexation work myself. So um, I'm not an anti-annexation guy. I'm generally uh, in favor of it, but um, certainly was, was happy to, to do some work on behalf of Monroe County, just analyzing um, Bloomington's fiscal plan and just trying to put out, you know, factual information and and seeing where we think um, you know, there may be differences between the way we would analyze things and and the way they've currently been analyzed and just kind of want to walk you through um, our observations and comments and and just some tools that we've developed to help uh, yourselves and residents in the uh, annexation area analyze the potential impacts. So with that, hopefully everyone can see my screen. I want to scroll to page two. One of the tools that we've developed that we thought would be helpful is a property tax calculator. As you all know, if you've looked at the fiscal plan, it's, it's a lengthy document. There's um, probably hundreds of pages in the back of it that calculate tax impact by parcel. And we wanted to provide kind of a simplified tool for folks to look up a- and calculate their tax impact. And and one of, there were very various reasons for that. One is some of the information um, included in the fiscal plan is a little bit dated at this point. So it's using 2019 assessed value information for taxes payable in 2020. And we wanted to give kind of a, a more fresh look at that and and base that off of uh, twenty assessed value for taxes payable in 2021. So you know, by doing that, we're capturing a lot of changes. Whether it's transfers and ownership of, of parcels, um, we're, we're capturing, you know, the newest certified assessed values with, with the current tax rates. Um, and there can be significant differences. Um, you know, just a, just a quick example of that is one parcel I looked up. If, if I look up that parcel in the fiscal plan, it shows an impact from annexation of seven dollars and forty cents. Um, when I plug it into our tax calculator, based on the new information, the tax impact is eight hundred and thirty dollars. Um, so there can be some very significant changes and you know, I, in that instance, the reason for that significant difference is the, the parcel changed hands and it's, it's no longer a homestead parcel. It's a parcel that, you know, maybe a rental or something else that, that disqualifies it from, you know, the one percent cap level and many of the, many of those deductions that they had in 2019. Um, they no longer have in 2020. So the tool that you see in front of you, um, we, we hope to make available on the county website so that people can utilize this and look up their own impact. I've, I've tried to make it as user friendly as, as I possibly can. Starting with just kind of four steps at the top with a link to, for folks to be able to look up their property tax bill, um, select their taxing district, uh, fill in information from tables one and five from their tax bill. And then it gives a summary of the dollar increase and the percentage increase uh, from annexation. And again, this is based on, really just based on information that we know today um, with 2021 tax rates. Um, if people want to see additional information and the detail behind those calculations, that would be available as well. Um, on, on a second page here, it, it shows all of the breakdown of the assessed values by the one, two and three percent cap levels. Um, it does factor in homestead credits, um, all of the deductions over sixty-five circuit breaker credit, the referendum adjustments. Um, so it shows the pre-annexation property taxes and then the estimated post-annexation property taxes. And again, on that first page summarizes that difference. Along with that, to make it um, a little more self-explanatory, we put together kind of a, a bit of a user guide so that when folks do go out to the, the linked website, this is what they're going to see. Um, they're going to see a tax bill and I've, I've blacked out the identifying information of, of this specific one, just to although it's public data, just didn't want to put that out there for somebody's parcel. Um, you know, it, the first page is the uh, payment coupons showing the, the spring and fall installment payments. Um, but once you proceed past this page and get to page two, this is where you can find all of the data to plug into the tax calculator. So um, step two was identifying your tax information. So here's step two with the highlighted, I'm sorry, your taxing district. So here's step two with the, your taxing district highlighted. Step three was to move, move into table one and input the values um, from one A, one B, one C. And also, if you happen to have a value in four C, entering those values in the tax calculator. And then lastly, step four down here, entering the data from table five, which is the various deductions applicable to that property. So hopefully this little guide would help folks know how to use the calculator and um, hopefully that would be pretty self-explanatory. So let me touch on one more page here and then I'll pause to see if, if we have any questions so far, but wanted to put together just some, just a couple of frequently asked questions and explain why we're doing this and why we would want to provide this tax, tax calculator. So you know, if someone has the question, when I utilize the property tax calculator on the county's website, I get a different result from what is shown in the fiscal plan on the city's website. Why is that? So there could be numerous reasons for that, and I wanted to um, walk through what those reasons could include. So as, as I touched on a bit, the tax impacts in the fiscal plan are based on 2019 assessments, which are outdated at this point. Um, per Indiana code, the parcel list should include the most recent assessed value of the parcel. So this can be, I, I get it, um, you know, from a preparer's standpoint, why maybe that information wasn't updated to the most current, but particularly giving a fiscal plan of this large, um, it can be very time consuming and cumbersome. But we have used for the tax calculator purposes, um, the more current 2020 net assessed values for taxes payable in 21. And by using this mo- this more current data, we are capturing changes in ownership, assessed values, tax rates and, and other factors, you know, other factors such as a parcel going from a homestead to a rental par- rental property, for instance. Um, the tax impacts included in the fiscal plan factor in assessed growth, assessed value growth of twelve percent total over four years, whereas our calculations do not factor in growth. Um, you know, is growth likely to occur? Maybe, but we just say that uh, growth is speculative and may or may not occur with or without annexation. Um, in addition, the growth is, is applied improperly in the fiscal plan. Um, you know, if you're going to assume growth, you should apply it to net assessed values with the applicable adjustments to deductions. Um, but in the fiscal plan, it appears that it was incorrectly applied to gross assessed values, uh, which creates some inconsistencies in the net assessed value growth per parcel. So we are only comparing the impact on current tax bills based on the tax bill today versus the tax bill if it were incorporated into the city of Bloomington today. So in addition, the breakdown between the, uh, you may have noticed in the fiscal plan, when they made some growth assumptions, they did then break down the um, impacts between those caused by assessed value growth and those due to the annexation. Um, and quite honestly, it's, it's really not calculated properly uh, when it breaks out, breaks that out. Um, it assumes that twelve percent of the tax bill increase is due to twelve percent growth in assessed value, which, which really just isn't correct, and it understates the tax bill increase due to AV growth and overstates the tax bill increase due to annexation. So question two, is it possible that my tax impact from annexation could be different by the time a successful annexation would become effective in 2024 for taxes payable in 2025? The yes is, it is entirely possible and, and it's, it's likely. You know, over the next four years, it's likely that assessments and tax rates will change, many of which may be out of the control of specific individual taxing units. However, the estimated tax impacts calculated by the tool on the county's website are the best estimates based on the facts as known today. So I'll scroll back up to the tax calculator and, and pause for a moment to see if anyone has any questions before we continue moving on.
Great, thank you. Um, looks like we do have some questions. Um, Counselor McKim and then Peter.
Yeah, th- this is less a question than a comment, but it's just, I, I really, we cannot uh, emphasize enough the importance of the comments that uh, that Dean just made about the assumptions that they use that, that, because if you're trying to co- compare the city's numbers with our numbers, our numbers essentially assume this annexation takes effect immediately based on everything we know rather than in, in taxes that are paid in 2025. And so we're not trying to guess at all the many things that could happen during those, those four years, and instead just basing this on what we know now. And um, you know, I think honestly, I think that is the best way to uh, break out and disambiguate the um, impact of the uh, of specific, of the annexation specifically versus all the other things that could occur. But I, but it is incredibly important to, to, for everybody to understand that, that the annexation wouldn't happen this year. And so there are all kinds of things that could happen in the, in the interim. This is just based on what we know now.
Counselor Iverson?
Yeah, uh, I wanted to give some quick feedback. Uh, I really found you, this tool that you've got displayed up on the screen, uh, very intuitive and useful. Uh, I was able to get through it pretty quickly and you know, I'm not the sharpest tool in the toolbox, so that's good. Uh, this is nice to use. Um, I think it's also really important because I think as, as Counselor McKim was just stating, uh, this, a lot of this material is just not intuitive to a lot of folks. And the tool that uh, will eventually appear on the, the website for the county really makes it personal. It, it, when you look at it by your parcel, I think that's going to be a good tool for folks to make a, a really informed decision about how annexation could potentially impact their own uh, parcel. So uh, thanks for the tool.
Good, thank you for that feedback.
Are there any other questions from counsel? Yes, Counsel Munson.
I'm muted. I had a question about uh, the information uh, shown on this screen right here, and it's a, it's the note that if property owners live in Benton, Bloomington or Salt Creek townships, and if they qualify for over sixty-five circuit breaker, uh, the tax impact could be understated, but it will not exceed two percent. Why are Benton, Bloomington and Salt Creek townships uh, different for the over sixty-five circuit breaker?
Sure. Yeah, good question. Um, it's really because those three taxing units saw tax rate increases that were less than two percent from 2019, or I'm sorry, from 2020 to 2021. Um, a- and I say two percent because that's what a, the, the circuit, that over sixty-five circuit breaker credit limits your tax impact to two percent. So I think I'm kind of going from memory here, but I, the two of those three townships I mentioned, they actually had um, folks, folks living in those taxing districts, their ta- tax rates actually went down from 2020 to 2021. And uh, the other one, it went up by, I want to say, one point eight six percent, so a little bit less than two percent. And it was, it was, I couldn't ever figure out a way to automate the impact of all of that in this calculator. Um, I looked up numerous examples of, of parcels in those uh, taxing districts that um, in nineteen pay twenty had a, an over sixty-five circuit breaker credit, and then you wouldn't see one in twenty pay twenty-one. And it's likely that we're not seeing it because of the way the tax rate changed. But it's also possible that we're not seeing it because their circumstances changed, you know, maybe, maybe their income raised such that they didn't qualify for that over sixty-five circuit breaker credit anymore. So they're just left, because of the amount of tax rate change, there were enough questions that prevented us from being able to automate that with a high level of confidence.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes, Dean, I thought we were going to put uh, something on there to make it clear that that over sixty-five uh, circuit breaker credit is available throughout the county. However, in these, you know, some, in some way because the general public could look at this and think, well, it's only available in those townships that you mentioned. And I thought there was going to be something, some kind of a disclaimer or thing or something on there. You know, we talked.
Yeah. I, I do know we had some discussion about that and I, I just didn't recall that we arrived at a conclusion. Um, but
I mean, right.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, already that, you know, if the council member questions, it certainly
Sure.
the public might, some, just some small, we want to make sure everyone knows that circuit breaker credit is available throughout the county. It doesn't matter whether you're in the city or out in the city.
Okay. Yeah, we can consider revising that statement to make that a little more clear.
Are there any other? Are there any other questions from council? Dean, thank you for the, the information. It is useful, and I see a question from Councilor Hawk.
Sorry, on that next page, when you're talking about the fiscal plan support, I think, I'm trying to look at it as though I've never heard of a fiscal plan or any of that. But I'm thinking when I, I think it's the next page down where you're saying this fiscal plan, it, people might look at it and think it's, not understand, it's the city's fiscal plan you are discussing. The reason why.
Is that, is that in the?
It was on the.
FAQ?
I, it was like when you started.
I think, I think it was, yeah.
Okay, let me, let me get there.
I just know when I looked at that, I thought, hmm, okay, there, there, in there. It says the tax impacts in the fiscal plan. And so it seems to me if we said in the city's fiscal plan, but maybe what everybody's supposed to know is the city.
The one on the city's website?
Yeah, right, right. Well, maybe they, maybe that's sort of answered on that first line. Just want to make sure they understand where, that it's not the county's fiscal plan that was based on 2019 assessments.
Sure, yeah, I mean, I get, you know, to me, being in this every day, it's intuitive because it's, it's a, you know, a county can't annex, it's a city or town that's going to annex and, and has that requirement to prepare a fiscal plan. But, but I get your perspective that, that it's not as intuitive when you're not in it on a day-to-day basis.
Just for the average person looking at that, they don't, you know, many of them jump even know that there's a tax rate and they don't care, they just get a tax bill and pay it, so.
If there's a, a question by someone who's using this tool on the website, they can still go ahead and submit a question using the email that we have posted, is that correct? I should probably know this.
We were going to see if there was anybody who was half capable and timely.
And Margie, are you aware of like how someone might contact us directly from where the, where this tool is going to be on the website?
We were going to have, I don't think we landed on exactly who was going to be answering those questions. But we are definitely going to have a contact on the website once that tool goes up there and explains that they will, I don't know if it's going to be commissioner's office or, or a council office or the legal, but we'll get that figured out when this tool gets placed up there. There will definitely be contact.
Seems like a good idea, thanks.
And certainly, you know, if questions come in, feel free to reach out to me. I, we've tried to account for, you know, any situation, various types of assessments and deductions within the tool. But I, I wouldn't be entirely shocked if there's some odd situation that we haven't accounted for in there. But I, I would expect those to be few and far between.
Sure, great. Councilor Deckard?
Thank you very much. I, I agreed with Councilor Hawk on that question that she raised as I was reading those few FAQs. And if you're considering suggestions down the road or any other potential change, I don't know if we may be on that. But in that Q1 question, it might say after the fiscal plan on the city's website here and after referred to as fiscal plan, it occurs to me, everyone in this county has had some contract or other they dreaded and they signed with that kind of language. But again, that, that's completely your call. And just to clarify, if we could go back up a couple pages, up to really where the, the search, the search engine is. Essentially, and if you could just maybe say this one more time, I want to make sure that folks in the public or in our audience today understand this as they're talking with individuals that really they're trying to figure all this out beyond just reading the newspaper. I, I'm not just compelled to have Van Buren Township as my taxing district. That's a dropdown, I can select that, find wherever I am in the county and do that. And then beyond that, as I think both you and Councilor McKim were saying, this is an estimate based on 2020 numbers going into 2021, timing of everything and when this happens and many other variables does not mean that that dollar increase of 42386 or 49.74%, that's not gospel, as they say. That, that could be all over the place, but we're doing our best, right? Am I saying all this correctly?
Yep, those are all fair statements. And, and yeah, to your point up in step two, you, you're right. When you see this document live and electronic, there is a dropdown menu there and you'll be able to select from, I think it's, I want to say six different townships that are, that are a part of the annexation. So keep in mind, you know, I, I think someone that's already in the city when we were testing this tried to use it and it's not going to work for you because you're already in the city. So it needs to be someone that's in the annexation area and in one of these six townships that, that are a part of the annexation.
Thank you very much.
I wonder if we.
Go ahead, Councilor Hawk.
Wonder if there should be something on there to say? Because how many people might try to do it? I mean, we already had somebody from the county when they saw this, one of our attorneys tried to do it. So, you know, they're pretty bright and, and so it didn't work for them. So maybe instead of everybody trying to do it and then we start getting all these calls, it doesn't work, doesn't work. Well, it, it only is going to be if you are in the annexation area. If you've already been declared to be in that area.
And that might be something we could put on the website surrounding this tool. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that does seem like a good idea because you never know. Are there any other questions, comments from our, from council? Okay, and I believe we're, you have more for us, right?
Yeah, I'm actually, at this point, I am going to scroll down and hand it over to Paige. And Paige, would you like for me to keep control or you want to share your screen?
No, Dean, you can keep control if you would like to, that would be fine. I can just tell you when to go to the next page.
Okay.
So my name is Paige Sansone and just by way of background, as, as Dean did, I, I spend a lot of my time looking at impacts of various things happening within local government. So impacts to revenue specifically, like local income tax, property tax, vehicle excise tax, things that may be impacted when there's governmental consolidation, annexation, developing fire territories, districts, et cetera. So that's why I'm more involved in this piece of the analysis. So there's a lot of numbers here, but I'm going to just try to, to simplify this and summarize it. So we'll spend a lot of time, or not a lot of time, but we'll spend some time on Monroe County's piece. But the rest, I'm just going to go through it really quick. So what we did is we, we really wanted to analyze REDI Financial Group's projections on, on revenue impact. We did look at the assumptions that were made. So for example, REDI Financial Group used assumptions for property tax growth. So he, he used an assumption of 3.8% per year on the growth in property tax. That's pretty reasonable. He also used a 3% growth on local income tax year after year. That's also pretty reasonable. So really what we were doing, we're doing is looking at his assumptions that he used and how, what was the reasonable of the, reasonableness of those assumptions? And we tried to restate what he had. And we had to restate because although his, a lot of his assumptions were reasonable, they weren't used consistently throughout the report. In addition to that, when we look at things like local income tax and vehicle excise tax, those are allocated to units within the county based on how much each unit is levying in proportion to all the levies in the county. We don't, we cannot see the detail of how he made those calculations. But when we made those calculations based on what we know and what is stated in the report, we do come up with some, some fairly large variances, especially at the county level and, and what, and what our projection is, for instance, local income tax and what REDI Financial Group's projection is for local income tax. So let's just start with Monroe County. We've got this, you know, the first two columns are Baker Tilly restated and the second two are REDI Financial Group's projections. And focusing on year two is really going to be the best bet because local income tax, there's a year lag. So anything happening, you know, for instance, in 2021 is going to impact 2022 local income tax. So when we're looking at the, the impact of the annexation, it's really year two where you're going to see the largest impact on revenue because again, there's that year lag time with the local income tax. So looking at Monroe County unit, you know, the, these are the specific items in, in the report. And, and we agree that these items would be impacted by an annexation. So if we start with circuit breaker tax credits, we did an analysis of these credits and found that he was pretty close within reasonable parameters. So you can see that the variance on line one there for both years is about 15,500, pretty close. Vehicle excise, it was close on this one. I'm not sure that it was close on some other units. I know it wasn't close on some other units, but vehicle excise is also allocated based on how much each unit is levying. So if the city of Bloomington increases their levy, then everyone else is going to get a, a smaller share of local income tax and auto excise when you redistribute. So that obviously has an impact. He, he was pretty close with that one as well. But now look at local income tax. I tried to highlight the ones where there seemed to be a big variance and we can't really see the behind the scenes work on this. So I, I'm not sure what he used, but I can tell you what we use is, we use a tool that really is based on what the DLGF uses to, to prepare those allocations. And it's, it has a lot of the statutory requirements within that calculation on how to distribute. It's not just as simple as, okay, my share of levy is X amount to the whole county. Yes, that's a big part of it. But there's also parts of the calculation where you're eliminating some levies that can't apply in this calculation. You're making adjustments for fire territories and districts. So we get that tool from the Department of Local Government Finance on an annual basis and we can run calculations through that. So when we ran the calculation through this tool, we got a different answer, which makes a, a bigger difference for, for you, the county unit. So you can see that local income tax, we're showing a reduction or we're, we're projecting a reject, a reduction of 1.4 million, whereas REDI Financial Group was projecting a reduction of 535,000. So, you know, that, that certainly is, is a big variance. But the rest of the items, we really didn't note a big variance. For, I will, I do want to make a disclosure that on stormwater fees and TIP revenue, there wasn't any detailed calculations within the REDI Financial Group report to, to really analyze. We think that these look reasonable, but we weren't really, we could not analyze that information because it just simply wasn't available. So we just, we used those as in this report that, you know, okay, it looks reasonable, we'll, we'll use that information. But again, didn't have a really enough information to, to analyze those. And we did footnote this in the schedule. So again, let me just kind of cover some of the assumptions that are driving these variances. Where we saw the biggest variances was in local income tax and vehicle excise. Some variances were really minor. So reasoning for that, local income tax, you know, the report stated, the fiscal plan stated that they were using a 3% growth per year, but they did not apply that consistently. So what ended up happening is local income tax public safety was a 3.8% growth per year on average, based on them not being consistent with their calculations. Certified shares was closer to the 3% grow. But all in all, that kind of, you know, obviously made things a little bit different. But I think where the biggest change is, is I, and again, I don't know how the allocation method was applied, but I think that's where it got to be the bigger variances on how it was allocated. Other things to note is that, you know, there, there was an assumption that some levies would change. Okay, so let's start with the city of Bloomington. The city of Bloomington, you know, when, when any city annexes, they are allowed up to a 15% increase in the maximum levy based on how much assessed value is added by that annexation area. Well, the assessed value added here is over the 15%. So really, the city would receive an automatic levy adjustment without filing any appeal of about 5.5, 5.6 million. The report is showing an increase of over 7 million. So the report does not note that there is any type of appeal that will be filed by the city of Bloomington, but we have to assume that there's some sort of appeal because it's over that 15% maximum. So we went ahead and made that assumption that, you know, we just, we just went along with the assumption that was in that report. But I think it's important to note that this does assume that Bloomington will file an annexation appeal to get that additional $2 million or 1.4, I think, is really what the number is. So again, Bloomington's levy is going up. So the allocations of vehicle excise and local income tax are going to get redistributed. So that's what's driving a lot of that. Also in the report, it appears that there's an assumption that the Bloomington transit levy will go up. So we incorporated that, go up by about 320,000. Then on the other side of things, Richland and Salt Creek Township, the assumption within the report is that there would be a decrease in, in service, which seems correct to us because fire services are going to be taken over by the city for those two townships. But there's also an assumption that there's a corresponding decrease in property tax. And I think that's something that would, we would really need to look at because I'm not, I'm not convinced that DLGF will require a corresponding decrease in property tax. And if they would, that it would be exactly that amount. So I mean, again, just based on, on the assumptions within the fiscal plan, you know, we, we carried on those assumptions. But I think that if, if Baker Tilly was preparing the fiscal plan, we would take a more in-depth look at that and talk to the townships to determine if that's really a, you know, a, an assumption, a, a, a correct assumption to make. The report also, if you look on under Monroe County, also assumed that there would be a service level reduction for the county. And, and yes, that seems reasonable. But the amount of the service level reduction, again, you know, if we were doing this analysis, we would have conversations with the county to determine the amount of that reduction, if that really is reflective of the services provided to the annex area, annexation areas currently. So all of that said, you know, I've, I've highlighted the areas where we saw the, the larger variances. I think most of it's in Monroe County, but if you want to scroll down, Dean. So Ellettsville, we saw, you know, we're, we're estimating a larger reduction in revenue by about $57,000. Steinsville, pretty close, not, it's immaterial. The school corporation were actually showing a, a less reduction of revenue by 45,000. So that's, that's good. But again, these are two terribly different. The Monroe County Library, we did see a variance there, that's in the local income tax again. So I would say that that's pretty material. We're showing local income tax or we're projecting local income tax to, to go down by 188,000, whereas the REDI Financial Group report is showing a reduction of 96,000. So those are those variants, if you can continue to scroll, Dean. Not much in the way of Bloomington Township, Perry Township, Richland Township. But we did see another pretty large variance there again in local income tax, where we're showing a reduction of about. um, where we're showing a reduction of about 56,000, almost 57,000. And Reedy Financial Group is showing a reduction of 44,000. I mean, I'm sorry, they're not showing a reduction at all. Or no, they're showing a reduction, I'm sorry, I can't see the, the titles up at the top. They're showing a reduction of 12,568, which the, the total variance is 44,000. Um, Salt Creek, not much of a variance there. Continuing down, Van Buren Township, um, you know, again, just trying to highlight the variances. Now, we get to Monroe Fire Protection District. This, this was interesting. So, you know, they get local income tax just like other taxing units within the county. So, um, we, they're gonna be impacted. They're gonna be impacted by this reallocation of levy and, I'm sorry, the increases in levy for the city and the reallocation of the local income tax. So, we're showing a decrease of 207,000 for the local income tax. Reedy Financial Group did not have any reduction shown. I don't know if it was a formula situation or, or what it was, but there was no reduction. So, that's a pretty big impact where, you know, it, there has to be some reduction because there's a reallocation of those items when you change levies for particular units. Um, moving on to the solid waste, not very much. So, I know this is a lot of numbers, and this tends to get very confusing. And I know the taxpayers aren't really gonna be focused in that much on this. But I think the taxing units that are impacted will be focused on this part of the presentation if, if they should be in attendance. So, if you can continue on, Dean. So, the next, so this is a very good summary page. This is a summary of, of all of the uh, revenue impact combined. And I highlighted year two because that's where you're gonna see this, the biggest impact or the start of the biggest impact. So, Monroe County, we have total uh, revenue reduction of 2.7 million, whereas Reedy Financial Group was showing 1.859. So, there's that variance there. Bloomington, city of Bloomington, we're pretty close. They're showing a revenue increase, Reedy Financial Group of about 10.9. We're showing 10.7. That, that's pretty close when you're dealing with large numbers like that. And you can see going on the rest. I thought it was, it was good to put a, a variance column out to the right so you can see what some of the variances were. Again, not a lot of large variances, but it is in places like Monroe Fire Protection District, Monroe County Unit. Um, you know, those, those, uh, I think Monroe County Library was another big one. So, if, if there, if there's a unit, a taxing unit that wants to know how they're gonna be impacted, they could see as a summary, year one, year two, year three, four, and a comparison in the two different reports. But I have to go back to, you know, kinda what we were talking about with the property tax. We don't know what the growth is going to be year to year to year. So, um, you know, this is all dependent on what happens with actual property tax growth, actual growth in local income tax. But we tried to use some of the same methodology that was in the Reedy Financial Group so we can compare apples to apples. So, we've, we've identified that there's some variances, and I think the biggest variances are local income tax and somewhat on the vehicle excise tax. So, continuing on. So, this is just specific to the city of Bloomington and all of their different revenue streams that would be impacted by this annexation and what we came up with as the bottom line. So, we've restated some of these things, and I, I tried to list some of the assumptions at the bottom. But, you know, for the most part, um, we, we stuck with the assumptions that Reedy Financial Group used. However, there were a few places where um, they were inconsistent. Even there was a couple of places where the net assessed value of the annexation area was a little bit inconsistent. What, there was an area where um, the report is calculating cigarette tax, which is based on a per capita formula. And the per capita formula should be 0.57, so 57 cents per capita. The Reedy Financial Group used uh, $5.70 per capita. So, I think it was just a, a decimal place situation. Fortunately, that didn't cause a big variance because it's a very small amount of revenue. Um, and then I mentioned, you know, kind of the assumed growth for local income tax. We used 3% consistently, whereas Reedy Financial Group was a little bit inconsistent with how they use that. There, sometimes they were using 3%, and then another time, it was calculating out to be a 3.8% growth. So, just those types of things. Um, and continuing on, Dean.
I think, I think in that same vein, Paige, as, as that cigarette tax kind of error, we saw some errors where, for some of the annexation areas, they were using the correct road miles, but in other areas, it was the incorrect road miles. And, and same situation with population. Um, some areas were correct and, and referencing the population in another area, the report correctly. But for other areas, it was not. And again, that was some of those, you know, I think in the grand scheme of things, it was probably over a couple hundred thousand dollars of revenue difference. But it was some of those smaller revenue categories that individually is, is not a huge impact.
Yeah, and I think that's really the comment I wanted to say, or to kinda reiterate, is that, yes, there were some inconsistencies. Yes, there were some formula issues perhaps. But as far as big variances, again, I would say mostly in the local income tax. His, the, the assumptions used in the report by and large were, were pretty reasonable. So, if you go on to the last page here is where we're comparing, there's a, there's some pages in there in the fiscal plan that compares revenue over loss, like can Bloomington sustain this? Um, and so, you know, we're, we're pretty close. Um, I think it's just the overall variances in the report have us a little bit different. Um, but what this is showing is the maximum, uh, the revenues over maximum cost. The report actually shows minimum maximum. We just picked the maximum. So, you can see in year, year one, two, three, and four, how, how this kind of plays out. There's a capital number in year one of 24 point, almost $4 million. And so, the remainder of this page is just trying to spread that out over five years, 10 years, and 20 years to see if everything can be funded. Again, when you get down towards the bottom, Dean, if you can scroll down, it's, we're not too far off, you know, uh, uh, based on the projections that's in the report. But there are some differences, again, going back to just some differences throughout the report. Um, so, I, I think that brings me to the end of, of my stuff. Certainly, Dean's is more straightforward. This is a lot of numbers, a lot, there was a lot of calculations that go behind this. Um, but, you know, I guess this is more or less for the taxing units that wanna see how they may be impacted by this annexation. Questions for me?
Lots of questions. I saw Counselor Hawk and then uh, Counselor McKim and Counselor Iverson.
Uh, yes, Paige, um, on the uh, Reedy report, uh, they were discussing the uh, the one that they were going to take out. I believe it was like 24 million, but I don't remember that number for sure. But then they said they were not going to put a, a property tax rate on it. Or, I mean, could you pull that up? Because I don't want to misinterpret what was being.
Um, yeah, so we show that here. So, they've got, so the annexation fiscal plan contemplates about 24.3 or $4 million worth of capital costs. And the, the financial plan does say that these capital costs will be covered with the revenue generated from the annexation so that no new property tax rate will have to be put on for this, for this, um, to pay for this debt. Um, so, you know, I think if you scroll down, I don't know that that'll be completely possible. It's close, probably, if you have a 20-year type of uh, 20-year, you know, debt service. I, I think it, it could be close. Again, there's a lot of things that will be changing all through those years. Um, but, but they do. They do mention in the fiscal plan that they, they don't anticipate increasing the property tax rate to fund this debt service.
They don't say that they wouldn't increase the income tax rate?
No, that's not stated anywhere within the fiscal plan. Uh, uh, any, any talk of increasing the local income tax rate. Certainly, they could do that. Certainly, they could put on a property tax rate to fund this debt service. But, but you're right, they don't, they don't say that. The only certain statement that they say, it seems, is that they will not put on a property tax rate for the debt service.
Yeah, Counselor McKim?
Uh, yes, uh, thanks, Paige. This is terrific information. And um, I know there's a lot of details in here, but, you know, I, I like to uh, go kinda zoom out to the big picture. And so, to do that uh, from the county's perspective, can you go back to the page where you did the impacts on each of the taxing units in, in detail? The, the first page of your part of the presentation?
Where the Monroe, where it started with Monroe County, Dean?
Yes, yeah, that's it, thanks. So, the way, and this is more a comment from my colleagues. We, we talked about this in the status review meeting uh, on this uh, with Baker Tilly. But, you know, the way I like to look at this is, I kinda like to separate out the, the um, specialty restricted taxes, the gasoline, wheel tax, stormwater revenue, and so on, and really look at um, what is the impact of annexation on, on the general fund in Monroe County? Because that's really where we have to make all the decisions. Um, and so, I, I kinda look at that as those first three lines, uh, the circuit breaker credits, the vehicle excess tax in the, in the lit. And if you add those numbers together, you get, you know, approximately, I, I should have actually um, added them, approximately $1.8 million. Um, so essentially, the way I look at it is year two and subsequent years of the uh, of the annexation that the annexation, if it fully goes through, would have, and the city receives their excess levy, uh, the annexation levy that they're requesting, would have approximately a $1.8 million impact on our um, uh, on our general fund um, revenues, which, you know, which I also include uh, lit and public safety lit. And, you know, that's out of approximately a $50 million budget uh, for the same, the same fund. So, essentially, that boils down to about a 3.6% impact on our general fund revenues, by which I include all the, you know, the frozen levy funds that are all fungible with uh, with general fund. So, I think that's kinda the big picture that I look at it at. You, you are essentially saying that the annexation, if it fully goes through in year two, would be about 3.6 million, or 3.6% hit on our, um, on our general fund, um, funds. You can react to that, or you don't have to, or my colleagues can react to it. That's, that's just the way I see it.
Wow. Um, I believe Counselor Deck, I mean, Counselor Iverson is next.
Um, I had a separate question. So, if there are reactions to what Councilmember McKim uh, just posed, then I, I'm more than willing to, to give up the floor.
Is that Counselor Munson is, are you?
I'm reacting.
Sure, okay, react.
Um, independently, I also looked at what Counselor McKim did. Uh, and I think this is the best way to uh, assess what the real impact is on uh, county government uh, cost of services and how we might be able to fund them. And I would, I would recommend that other taxing units also take this particular approach to assessing the impacts uh, for their units. So, thank you, Counselor McKim, for talking about this.
Does anyone else have a reaction directly to that point? Okay, um, then, Counselor Hawk, did you?
Yes, um, I think that might be understating what the total uh, revenue loss would be for the county, uh, if we would take that approach. Because, um, we know that, that we're still going to have expenses for stormwater. And if we're going to be losing that kinda money in stormwater, then uh, and, you know, we still have uh, items out in the county we have to deal with. So, I'm not so sure that that's going to be a wash and say, well, now it's gonna be the city will do all that, uh, because we still have a lot that we have to do. The other thing I'm concerned a great deal with is that TIF revenue because of that huge bond out there in the Richland uh, TIF area. And that is backed up with general obligation. So, if they, if that should lose dollars, we'll have to come back into uh, um, some way to make up the, the loss to the, at either of the general fund or with some other kind of a tax rate. So, um, I would have some concern to indicate that we don't need to take those things into consideration. I didn't see that you were adding on, that you were uh, including in your analysis. And now, I'm speaking to Councilmember McKim. And, and because we hadn't talked about this, so I, I'm trying to wrap my head around why you would think that. Uh, with that loss of, of revenue for the um, for the highway department in, in that wheel tax, are you assuming that we will simply not, will have the uh, reduction in services? That we won't need that money?
Actually, I will, you know, I, I was not going that deep at all because I think the highway department would be the best to answer that question. I mean, clearly, we're in losing revenue. We're also losing road miles to maintain. And I think that, that's, there's probably a very detailed answer to that question of whether the loss in revenue is a wash or we even come out ahead. I mean, that, that's a theoretical possibility is that we could come out ahead. Um, and I don't know the answer to that. I'm just saying that the, the decisions we have to make in allocating revenue among various functions of government tends to occur more in the um, the general fund, where we're, we're balancing uh, priorities. And that's why I focused on that. Not to say that it's, the others aren't important uh, at all, just that there are, are technical answers to those questions that I don't have the, the knowledge to be able to answer. That's all I'm saying.
And the other um, point that uh, we discussed a bit in the working group was that assumed service level reduction. I believe uh, Paige, you were using their numbers because that, you know, we don't really know what those numbers would be. So, uh, that 582, 345 is just taking their numbers because we really don't know. So, we might not have that kind of uh, dollar amount to reduce.
That's correct, yes. I mean, again, you know, typically, we would, i- if we were doing this type of analysis and actually stating that there's a service level reduction, then we would want to meet with the highway department or meet with the affected department to try to get a better handle on what those reductions might be. So, I don't know that, that that happened. I, I don't know that Reedy talked to anybody from the county. So, it may be that that was just a rough estimate based on what he knew about road miles and, and things of that nature. So, yeah, I, we don't know what's behind that number, but it would be appropriate, if you wanted to get a really accurate number, to actually talk to the department head about the costs and, and, and what their opinion is on, on the, the appropriate reduction of costs.
Because what I'm looking at is if it's, if we should assume it's 582, 345, uh, that would be mainly to be coming from the stormwater and the gas and wheel tax, I think.
Yes.
So. Anyway, just my thoughts.
Okay, Counselor Iverson, your question?
All right. Uh, so, you know, as, as we are getting deeper into this uh, this COVID pandemic, and, you know, we're dealing with issues of housing, and we're dealing with all sorts of issues that we're dealing with, you know, a lot of these taxing units are absolutely vital to our response. Um, and so, my question is, is more of a logistics question. And, and in that, has this information, have these reports, any portions of these reports been shared with these taxing units? And what are the plans to share any portion of this report um, with the general public? Will it appear on the, the, the website? And how can the public view these, these documents?
Um, I can address that. As of now, the, um, this report should be on the county website. And it's a public record and can be shared.
So it should be on the website. I haven't double checked that, but it was supposed to go up about five o'clock today.
It's up there.
Yeah, so that's going to be helpful to, you know, have the conversations that we're going to have in the future to direct them directly to the Monroe County's website. So I'll put my hand down now and the others ask questions.
Okay, I believe Counselor Deckard, you're you're ready.
I hope so, thank you very much. And I, again, I appreciate the detail on this. This is very helpful for us that are in the position of running these taxing units or trying to, but also trying to anticipate what might happen with budgets. But I want to pivot just a little bit, and I actually tried to do some math. And I'm not as good as Counselor McKim or or Counselor Hawk, but I'm gonna, and the others, but I'm going to take a stab at something. And I, and I wanted to get clarification for taxpayers that might be watching, particularly in these affected areas that you have looked at. And if you could go back to the summary of estimated revenue impact sheet that you did, which was very helpful. And I, my question to you is this, if I'm looking, for instance, at year two on both of these accounts, and we'll use, on your side, we'll use that one for this part. If I'm a taxpayer watching this and trying to figure all this out, particularly in those affected areas, is it correct that, and please don't, you won't hurt my feelings, tell me if I'm wrong, I just want to make sure we understand this. If, is it correct that taking all of those lost dollars that you indicate on the spreadsheet and then moving those against any plus dollars, is that change, that net change we'd see? I did some rough math, it'd be about $7,50,928 in new dollars. Would that be coming just from those affected areas that are under consideration for annexation? Or is that a ridiculous thing to to say? Because I am just, shouldn't be doing this kind of adding in a meeting?
Um, I think part of that is true. I mean, certainly, the redistribution of vehicle excise tax and local income tax are coming basically from the other units and coming to, you know, Bloomington, because there's a redistribution. But also in that is that Bloomington is increasing their overall property tax rate because they've, they're going to have that automatic increase in their maximum levy. Plus, I mean, it would appear that they may be also doing an annexation appeal. So yeah, I agree that part of what you're saying is true. The, just remember that the, only two other units are are going to have a change in levy, at least that we're seeing. It's Salt Creek and Richland, at least as part of the assumption is reducing. So for what what you said to be 100% true, everybody, all these other units would have to be also reducing their levy at the same time to, you know, to even that out. But yeah, part, part of it is a redistribution of revenue, especially with local income tax and vehicle excise, for sure. That is a true statement. It's redistributing and it's primarily going to to Bloomington and Bloomington Transit and Bloomington Stormwater.
Paige?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. I want to, I want you to just, I think you may have said something that you didn't mean to say. I'm not sure that it's entirely true that Bloomington's tax rate is going up.
Well, yeah.
Because I think, you know, generally speaking, I mean, it's likely.
Yeah.
Yes, levy is going up, but tax rate is not necessarily. In fact, you know, they're, they're showing it going down in the fiscal plan, which, which is entirely possible. You know, generally, annexation tends to be kind of a tax rate neutral proposition where your levy is going up by about the same percentage as your net assessed value. And I think that's kind of what they're assuming here with the appeal. So I just wanted to be careful in our words there.
Thanks, Dean, that's, that's true. It's the property tax levy overall that's going up.
Thank you very much. And I appreciate you all walking us through that. I know it's not as simple as new dollars in this area. But I think there's a lot of folks that are trying to figure all this out, including the taxing units, which you, you've been extremely instructful to us on on estimates, but still better than no estimates or no idea. And I appreciate this very much.
Thank you.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes. I think we need to make it so that we all understand it and the taxing units will understand it that they are not allowed to put in, to regain and recoup that loss from the circuit breaker, the schools or any other taxing units, including the county. We are not allowed to put in some kind of additional revenue to make up for that loss. And you see that specifically, I think, clearly with the school. But Monroe County School, I think that loss was about a half million dollars. And and they're not allowed to put in and for an extra levy to make up for that loss.
That's, that's correct, yeah.
Are there any other questions or comments from counsel? Okay, are there any questions from the public? I'm not seeing any. It's a quiet crowd.
Justice, for instance, the school board meeting is this evening. And a lot of parents, a lot of people very involved with that school board meeting. So many other people will be here, but there just can't be two places at once.
Absolutely. That's, that's our competition tonight, but that's okay. Lots of important things going on. If we don't have any more questions, I just want to, first of all, point out that Angie Purdy has said that the calculator will be up first thing in the morning for anybody in the public who's interested. And a link to the fiscal impact report from Baker Tilly is in the chat. And that should be available for attendees to see as well, unless I'm horribly mistaken. And thank you so much for taking the time to explain this to us. I'm not very good at at moderating and also thinking of questions. And so I'll be sleeping on my questions and calling few people tomorrow, maybe. But we've got a lot to think about, for sure, for sure. And I appreciate it. Thanks so much for your time.
All right, you're welcome, thank you.
Shayna.
All right, we are ready then to move to our our next item, and that's item number five on our agenda, which is the Racial Justice Data Project Update.
Hi there, Erica Oliphant here. I've got Dr. Gromman from IU here with me this evening as well. As you know, a while back, I requested funding and the ability to contract with Indiana University's Public Policy Institute Center for Health and Justice Research to conduct a racial justice data project, looking at our capabilities to track racial and ethnic disparities in our local justice system. And so at that time, we offered to to give updates periodically to council and to the community. And so we are here this evening to do that. Yesterday, I forwarded to counsel Dr. Gromman's written memo dated July 13th, 2021. I'm not going to go through everything that was in that written report, but just to hit some highlights. And we've had several Zoom meetings and site visits with Dr. Gromman and his team. At this point, we don't have disparity data that's ready to share, but we wanted to give you an update about what the research team has been up to. We have received a lot of records from Indiana's Prosecutor Case Management System, the Indiana Prosecuting Attorneys Council, Monroe County Jail and the Monroe County Probation Department for our observation period for the study, which is May 2018 to December 2019. Dr. Gromman and his team are comparing those data to each other and also with some of the physical files in my office to sort of see what is similar, what's different and how that's looking. Sort of what we're working on next, too, is we're beginning to schedule interviews that are designed to capture perceptions of racial and ethnic disparities in the local justice system. So the first interviews are actually going to be with staff in my office. But we're also looking to survey a large swath of community stakeholders, including law enforcement, pretrial release, probation and community corrections staff, the defense bar, court personnel and community members. We would invite any, anyone who is interested in being surveyed or participating in that process to reach out to my office. We'd be happy. I know we're planning to look at some organizations that have already expressed interest in the study, such as the Human Rights Commission and NAACP and several other organizations. But if anybody's interested, you can feel free to reach out to me. Dr. Gromman and his team have identified an exciting funding opportunity from Arnold Ventures. They are essentially, we're calling for proposals to do a very similar type of study. And this, this call for proposals came out after I had gotten this contract done. So unfortunately, I wasn't available when I asked you all to help me with this project. But we have used that as an opportunity to apply. We sent in a letter of interest to see if we can extend our study into infractions, looking at traffic stops and things like that, and also into a larger timeframe than the period that we're looking at and to help build our public facing dashboard. So based on our initial letter of interest, which was put together by Dr. Gromman, we have been invited to submit a full proposal. And so we're working on that. And we really have to thank Dr. Gromman for identifying that opportunity. And he's put a lot of work into the letter of interest for Arnold Ventures. So I appreciate him for doing that. But he's here on the call, so I'll invite him now to correct or expand upon anything that I've said so far. Thank you.
Thanks, Erica, and hello, everyone. I just wanted to touch base just real quick with a, with a simple update of a long memo that I had turned in to Erica that made its way to the council then. So I just want to remind folks that we're kind of in the beginning stages of this project. So most of our time has been spent trying to request and access official records, developing interview and survey instruments, working with Indiana University and its institutional review board to make sure that we're conducting ethical research for any of the data sources that we're trying to collect. And then we've been participating in a lot of informal conversations with Erica's attorneys and staff to learn a little bit more about formal policies and procedures, traditions, perceptions and priorities. So we're using some of that information to kind of direct us to where can we answer some more interesting questions that attorneys and staff would like to see us explore in a little bit more depth. And we're also using that information to design some of our interview and survey instruments. I did want to just make note of our observation period. So I know in some of our early discussions, the first proposal was an assessment of at least six months' worth of data. We had another meeting and we, we discussed having at least one year's worth of data. Right now, we have agreed to look at 20 months of data. So our observation period that we're looking at is May 2018 through December 2019. And remember, at least towards the December 2019 tail, we wanted to try to stop looking at records right before the pandemic hit, because as we all know, the justice system in every system in every county is much different after or during or after the pandemic. So this 20-month period then is going to give us an adequate sample size to start trying to identify whether or not there are racial and ethnic disparities and where they are located. So so far, in looking at the the official records we've pulled, we'll have 1,200 individuals who had charges that were declined during our observation period. We'll have 5,200 individuals whose charges are moving forward to prosecution. And we'll have 1,800 individuals whose charges were dismissed after a filing decision. So we're talking good sample sizes here to allow us to look at all the discretionary decisions that are made by prosecutors. So as Erica mentioned, we have been working hard on trying to understand PCMS, which is the primary data source used by prosecutors to enter information in into and then pull information out of. This is a statewide case management system. This is not unique to Monroe County. Most prosecutors across the state of Indiana will also have access to these records within their county. We exhausted all that we could from the pre-canned reports that were available within the system. So special shout out to tech specialist Rob Schollenberger for helping us walk through what is available and what can be pulled. After reviewing that information, then, we realized that there were some tables and fields that exist within the record system that were not pre-populated in a, an easily exportable report. So we approached the vendor who provides PCMS and asked them for a specialized report. We also worked with the Indiana Prosecuting Attorneys Council to gain access to more tables and fields that are not necessarily available to prosecutors. So again, I need to thank some folks, too, because this was a tremendous lift. This project is not just our research team and the prosecutor's office, there's a lot of moving parts. So Jason Carmichael at BC Forward, who's the vendor who helps with PCMS, has been instrumental in getting us the records that we need. At the Indiana Prosecuting Attorneys Council, Executive Director Christopher Naylor and Deputy Director JT Parker have opened doors for us. It's also very exciting to hear the Indiana Prosecuting Attorneys Council be so excited about this project. So hopefully, they're sharing that information with their colleagues. Across our time span, then, we, as Erica mentioned, we do have access to jail records. Special thanks to Colonel Sam Crowe and Major George Trippany for providing access to those records. We have pretrial and probation records during our timeframe. So thank you to Presiding Judge Mary Ellen DeKoff, Chief Probation Officer Linda Brady, and Deputy Chief Troy Hatfield for making those records available. So right now, our work is trying to make sense of all those records, try to connect all of the tables that exist within these fields and then start connecting records across each criminal justice system agency. That's going to provide us with a wealth of data that we can use. We are starting case file reviews then, so we're looking to do some manual coding of physical files. The only logic there, why we're moving that forward, is that there are a few pieces of information that tend to be found in case files that precede a record entry into PCMS. And so we'd like to take a look at that information. That's information such as adjustment to arrest charges, if we'd like to enhance the charges or lower the charges, pretrial offers and diversion offers. So we'll be able to collect that information. We are beginning interviews. Our interviews are starting with attorneys and staff at the prosecutor's office. And we'll slowly work our way outside the office to talk with justice system professionals as well as members of the community. As Erica mentioned, we have a survey that we're developing. I should add, too, I'm happy to share with the council and have this disseminated as well. We have a recruitment document that has our direct contact information and a little bit of background about why we're asking folks to participate in a survey. I'm happy to have that shared so that if folks are interested, they can reach us directly and kind of keep that arms length away from Erica. But I also encourage folks to reach out directly to Erica if if they wish. And then just to wrap up, I just want to talk for a minute about the exciting opportunity then from Arnold Ventures. So at the end of May 2021, they put out a call for letters of interest and a call for research proposals to examine prosecutorial discretion and its effect on racial and ethnic disparities at various prosecution decision points, which should sound very familiar to us, because that's what we're advancing with this project. What's innovative about this opportunity is that it requires or prefers a project that is a combination of practitioners, researchers and community members who are all at the table, who are helping to design the research study, and then going about the business of and then going about the business of collecting data, analyzing data and communicating the results of those data. Another fascinating piece about this opportunity is that it also provides the prosecutor's office as well as community organizations with a small pool of funds that are set aside to help participate in the research process. So our letter of interest was submitted July 1st. We were notified July 20th that we were moved to the next phase, which is a full proposal. That full proposal is what we're working on now, and that is due September 8th. The decision on whether or not we'll receive the award will be made during the fourth quarter of 2021 or the first quarter of 2022. Just to talk just for a minute about what we're doing in terms of that proposal, we are going to then expand what we're doing with this project. So we've learned a lot of valuable lessons with this project about data access, about the data fields and tables that we need. So I'm hoping to return a pretty significant return on your investment here. We'll be expanding then our timeframe from 20 months to about 13 years is the proposal. We'll be including traffic infractions and looking at how those traffic infractions are coupled with other criminal offenses, whether those are misdemeanors or felonies. And we'll take a little bit of a deeper dive into diversion decisions from the two programs that are available. I'm really excited about this opportunity and I hope that we're awarded. I forgot to mention as well, we have built in the idea of launching a public facing dashboard with these dollars. So instead of returning back to the council to make an ask, there's an opportunity to build this in. We were able to pull in representatives from IU's Bio-Statistics Consulting Center and Research Technologies Division on the Bloomington campus to help us build out that dashboard. Those are pretty much my main points of the update. I'm happy to try and answer or clarify any of the content I've discussed here or have shared in the memo.
Thank you so much, Dr. Gromman. That's really exciting. My first question is, how many hundreds of grad students do you have that can do all of this?
We assembled quite the team. And so they're very excited to, they're very excited to work on the current project and even more excited about making a big splash with Arnold Ventures' support.
Yeah, this is great. But truly, I did, and you probably did say what this was, but I must have missed it. The timeline for the current project in terms of when you were expecting to complete and that kind of thing, how does that compare with the proposed project?
Yeah, so I'm still on pace as proposed with getting this project, the current project, done by January of 2022.
Wow.
This project from Arnold Ventures, then, it's a little bit of an open timeframe on when we can start. So we're pitching the idea of starting June 2022 with a 30-month proposal. So that gets us through December 2024.
Great. That's terrific. Are there other questions from counsel? Counselor Hawk?
I just want to talk about the fiscal impact to the county and where we are so far. I'm recalling it was under 100,000. What was it, 60-something thousand? I'm sorry. I don't remember the dollar amount.
Sure, our request was in the neighborhood of $68,000.
That's close, yeah.
And and some of that was with the anticipation that we would have to pay for some of these data pulls and things like that. So we built in a little padding to do some of that work.
So that's, so so far we have committed to $68,000 period total. That's it, right?
Yes.
Okay, and so is the the grant dollars or whatever you're talking about with this other company, is there supposed to be matching dollars? Or what's the fiscal impact of that?
I do not anticipate if we are awarded.
Make sure that it's clear, that's what we, the council, we just look at the numbers.
Sure, absolutely. Dr. Gromman can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding that we will not be anticipating making a request of counsel for additional funding if we receive the Arnold Ventures grant.
Correct, there is no matching requirement with this award, either monetary dollars or in-kind matches.
Then I heard something about that you would come back to the county for an ask for, I lost it. There was something else you were going to come back and ask for, Mr. Grom.
Yeah, I'm sorry, let me clarify that. I'm not coming back to make an ask about the current project at all. There was some discussion about the next phase of this project, once it's completed, to be a discussion about launching a public facing dashboard.
Right, that it was.
So what we've done then with this Arnold Ventures proposal is build that into the proposal.
Counselor Iverson, you had a question?
Yeah, Dr. Grom, thank you for sending in the summary. I really appreciated how concise it was and how bold it was. That was, that's nice to get that. One of the things that I really appreciated too is how collaborative the investment that the council is making is turning into here. And it was great to see that Unitarian Universalist and NAACP are all being consulted and other groups too. So I really appreciate that. And then the last thing I wanted to comment on was I have some experience with Arnold Ventures as well, and they are very competitive. So I wanted to make sure that I got on and said, congratulations, this is a big deal. And anything we can do to support you, let us know.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Iverson.
Are there other questions from counsel? I just would like to say that you had mentioned maybe providing your contact information for the survey. If you wouldn't mind sharing that with the council office, just so we do have that, that would be fantastic. And Erica, if you could just send that to Kim, that would be, that'd be great. I don't anticipate there being a big, big rush of questions, but you never know. It's nice to have that on hand if we need it. And I wanted to echo Counselor Iverson's enthusiastic support. If there's something that the council or individuals can do, please don't hesitate to ask.
Thank you, Counselor Wilt. I will definitely share that information with Kim so that the council has it.
Great, and best of luck in the next round.
Thank you so much. We'll offer another update once we're ready here in a few months.
I think I'm supposed to ask her if there's any public comment or questions. I'm not seeing anybody. Okay, it looks like that will, that's all from from our end. So yes, thanks again. Really appreciate you taking the time to come and update us directly.
Thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Good night. We've heard so much, great stuff tonight. Okay, item number six on the agenda is where we are.
Counsel, I move to approve the Board of Commissioners' request to use the remaining appropriation balance of $113,915.70 in Fund 1000-0069, General Fund Commissioners COVID Account Line 30006, Contractual Towards the Safety Awareness Program Project.
Thank you, and I believe Ms. Purdy, our Commissioners Administrator, is here to talk to us about this.
Yes, and what I would like to do, as Andrew Lambert is also here, and he has to leave for another conflicting appointment. I can actually do this backwards. I'd like to allow him to show you what we have done, and then I can talk about what we would like to do. So if Andrew has the ability to share his screen, that would be great.
All right, good evening, everybody. Hopefully you're seeing my screen live now. I'm Andrew Lambert, President of Lambert Consulting, and I'm also the Social Media Manager on behalf of the Commissioners' Office for the past two years. When we all received the bad news last March that we were going to be going into a shutdown part because of COVID, I immediately sprung into action to make sure that we were able to get messaging out to our community, mainly because people were honestly scared and were looking for something to turn to in order to get good information. What I'm going to show you here briefly tonight, all this can be found on the Commissioners' Facebook page, because again, we do manage that. But these six videos that you see in front of you, some that have almost 600 views, some of the newer ones, we're working our way up, all tell the story of basically stay safe Bloomington and stay safe Monroe County. These ads were also run with a partnership with Comcast. And so we got a lot of viewership actually on TV as well over the last six months. This was a run period from January of this year until we just wrapped everything up. What's important to know is that I was able to negotiate very, very fair rates. And actually, several of these animation ads that you see in front of you were run during the Pacers playoff game. So it was kind of cool that we got a little extra, extra love and attention in what we're doing. Each one of these 60-second ads tells the story of what the Commissioner is trying to do in terms of social distancing, wearing your mask, so on. And what Angie will talk about in a couple of minutes is actually what my vision is for Phase Two. On top of all that, this is just one example. I don't know if you guys saw it coming in or out of our community. This is right by the visitor center as you're coming in off of I-69. We also had a duplicate billboard bought over by McDonald's and Starbucks by the high school in South Walnut. And we've had two different versions of this. Tonight, I only have time to show you one. The newest versions are actually up and running right now. So if you happen to be out in the community, please take a moment and take a look at that. The overall consensus from people online in our community has been a lot of positive feedback. They like this idea of having this constant remembering of what needs to be done. And more importantly, we were one of the first communities that really got proactive with this. Just about every county now has put up signs, if you've driven between here in Indianapolis or here in Evansville. And one thing that was brought to my attention by people who essentially do what I do, like in Marion County, is that they're already ahead, they're already doing a phase two where we're no longer talking about stay safe, but basically stay smart. And what's going to be coming down the line, especially as we get into the winter time. And the impact here to us, I promise I did take a breath. I just got to get through all this, so I don't put anybody to sleep here. The impact to us as well is that we have IU coming back in full capacity in three weeks. Obviously, we had the announcements from all the major industry players in town that they're going to go fully back in person as well. So I think it's important to keep that messaging moving forward if we can. So before I turn it over to Angie, does anybody have any quick questions for me or any curious about numbers? And then I'll let her do the rest.
Counsel, are there any questions for Mr. Lambert? That was a lot of information.
This takes me back to my teaching days. You guys look like my students. I just throw everything I use, and I'm like, no questions, great, go. Make sure you get that paper in on time. So, but I just want to thank everybody for the opportunity.
Counselor Deckard?
I don't know if this is appropriate or not, but I do think that, and maybe you all have it and what have you. But I, I think that as you consider messaging and far be it for me to write messaging for you verbally here in the meetings. But I think we've got to be talking about vaccinations. We are, we're heading back into the wrong direction. And I'm grateful for our school board and their work. But I'm sure that right now, a lot of people's decisions around vaccinations are beginning to once again affect everyone else. And I think we've got, we've got, we've got to get real here. We've been on Zoom for these meetings for a long time. And I think that a lot of people are going to be on Zoom for a long time if we do not pull our heads from our respective areas. So anyway, you can't put that in the message, but I want to put a plug for that message.
I could actually make a nice hashtag for you, Mr. Deckard. We can do that, pull your head, hashtag pull your head, right? We can do that. Well, I see a lot of yeses from the commissioners. So what I want to address that very quickly, which is the, the second round that I've been talking to Angie and the commissioners about, is that is more of a focus on vaccines. But it's also, so just a quick backstory. The reason why we did the animation is that most adults don't get as emotionally tied to it when it's like an animation kind of waving at you. So I think that's where we got the good feedback. What I want to do with the second phase is actually go in and talk and interview some of the healthcare providers, some of the first-line responders that have been impacted by this and will be impacted again as most likely a second round is going to hit our town this winter. That's what needs to be pushed out. That's what we need to stay on top of. And frankly, a lot of the communities and counties around us, they're already a little bit ahead of us. And I don't want to see us drop behind because we tend to set a lot of good goals and trends here. And I want, I want to stay on top of it. I'm, I'm local, so, yeah. On that note, Angie, I'm going to turn it over to you. Thank you, everybody else. I have a good reason for being 15 minutes late, and I'm going to drop all your names so I get out of trouble with the wife. So on that note, you guys have a wonderful night. Thank you for the opportunity.
Do you want me just to kind of go into my little spiel?
Please.
Sure, I'm actually, we actually have an appropriation already for this or that would meet this requirement, meet the needs of this project. But earlier this year, which seems like yesterday, but we're getting ready to go into August, and I'm just having a really hard time with that. But earlier this year, you guys appropriated a Commissioner COVID budget in the County General with the 0069 location number. And when you guys made that budget, when you did that, we talked a lot about what the expectations were of the use of those particular funds. We did not talk about this project. And so I feel like it's important to get your buy-in or your approval to use the funds for this particular project. I will tell you that your approval of us going forward with this project actually, well, then, we don't have enough money in this particular line. There's 113,000, the projects not to exceed 120. But we have it in other lines that we can then do a category, a within category transfer. The other thing that you guys might want to know is the first phase of this, I speak about it in phases. The first phase was actually a project that we submitted to the state last year in 2020 for the Public Safety Awareness Additional Cares Money that became available very late in the year. And we were, the state approved this project and the first phase. And so we were able to get reimbursed for that money. So this falls right in line with the intentions of the contractual line in the 0069 location budget. And we have, we actually have the $120,000 in another line. Because, and I don't want to confuse everybody, but because we had paid Mr. Lambert for the first phase, and it actually should have come out of a different fund. So the auditor took care of it, and it came out of the cares money for the first go-around, if you will. I thoroughly confused everybody. I hope not.
I think it makes a little bit of sense there. Do, are we ready for some questions? Perhaps, okay. Counselor Hawk?
I'm glad Brown's still here. Are you still there? Brown?
Oh, great, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, now, I may not be remembering this right at all. So I'm glad you're here so that you can see me straight. Didn't we at first take money, spend some money out of the social services grant line to do some of these things in advance? And then did we return that money from the cares money into that budget? Or, I'm just trying to figure out where we are money-wise. And, and the other thing I wanted to be clear with, if I understand this right, with these dollars, once you have brought them back and done all your homework to get them back in here, they went in. you have brought them back and done all your homework to get them back in here, they went into the general fund, and that can be used for anything. It can be used for Sheriff's Department. It could be used to, it's just a part of cash in our general fund. Do I understand that correctly?
You do.
Okay, then remind me what we did about returning the money into that Social Services Line? Or are we showing that we've already spent the Social Service money and it's depleted?
Can I? Can I? Because I'm not sure what you mean by Social Service.
It's the County Council's budget. It's in the County Council's budget, and I don't know whether it's labeled Sophia Travis or whatever. But we paid some bills out of that, didn't we, like upfront when this first started?
Are you talking about the COVID Business Social Service Line?
No, no, I think I think I know what she's talking about. At the very beginning of COVID, the Commissioners did expend money to local entities like United Way and the food banks. And I believe that initial use was taken from possibly the Sophia Travis line. And then, and then what happened was subsequently, you guys appropriated money in the rainy day. And so, so Sophia Travis was, that that line was corrected. So there's no loss in the Sophia Travis line, if you will, and the money came from the Rainy Day Fund.
Okay, I think I'm seeing Kim Shell shaking her head. Yes, so.
A correction. It was an appropriations correction was made. And so then what happened was then the appropriations are then returned to the Sophia Travis Grant Line. Am I correct in saying that? Okay.
Okay, so then that was made whole. I just.
Yeah, we made that all whole before we awarded the grants last year.
Everybody else probably already had that memorized.
It's it's good to to make sure everything's where it should be. That's absolutely fine. Are there any other questions about? I don't even know what we're doing about.
Allowing, allowing the Commissioners to use the money in the contractual line that's already appropriated and maybe to support this ongoing project.
Jeff McKim has a question.
It's not so much a question. It's more a comment, just that I appreciate your transparency in asking the Council to make sure that we understand that the scope of this appropriation includes this this particular project. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Any public comment on? No public comment? No hands that I can see? Okay. Then I guess we are ready for a roll call vote.
On a motion to approve the use of the remaining appropriation, balance and fund 1000-0069 General Fund Commissioners COVID toward a safety awareness project. Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKem?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk? Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero.
Thank you very much. And now we will move on to our next item, which is also from the Commissioner's Office.
Counsel, I move to approve the Board of Commissioners' request for additional appropriations in Fund 1170-0068 Public Safety Lit Commissioners in the amount of $53,356.16 in the Services category and $953,000 in the Capital category for a total of $1,006,356.16.
Great, thanks. Angie?
Hi. First of all, I would like to propose a different breakdown of the numbers. And that would be the line 47100 Equipment Law Enforcement. I've had an opportunity to speak with Mr. Evans, who's also on the call, and he could give you a much detailed version of what that particular purchase will give you. So I don't know how you want to do this. The new total actually is $716,866.16, no, 16 cents. But I don't know if you want to allow me to just kind of talk first, or if you'd like to amend the the motion.
The only line affected is the 47100.
That is correct. And I can, and that new number is $363,510.
So if I'm making a motion on that, my question is, are we moving from 953 to 363,510? Is that correct?
You are moving from, it should be seven. Hang on a second. It should be, the new total request is 716. So you're moving 363 versus 663. Is that what you just said? Sorry.
I'm not, I don't think.
We need to, we have to do these by category. We can't do it by line. So we need to adjust the category total. Okay?
Yeah. So essentially, services and capital.
Correct. So what was your new total? Yeah, what is the, what was that new amount?
47100? Or you want the grand total?
47100.
47100 is 363,510.
Okay, so then your new category total will be 663,510.
Where does that? Sorry.
Sorry. Would you mind giving all three of those numbers, not, not, not the bottom line total, but each individual line?
Yes, I would be happy to. So the first number remains the same, 53,356.16. The second line remains the same at 300,000. And the last line is the only line, well, is the line that changes. And that changes to 363,510. So 363,510.
Okay, for a grand total of 716,866.16?
That is most correct. Yes.
Okay, Counsel, I move we amend the motion on the floor to set the category total for Capital at 663,510 for a bottom line of 716,866.16.
Second.
Thank you.
Wonderful. So what I wanted to share with you guys is, so the first category, the first item that is before you, the 53,000, that was a mistake by our office in that we failed to encumber funds that had been appropriated for the for the criminal justice review. And by doing this appropriation, we'll just be able to pay out the remaining invoices that our consultants have provided. And we have not exceeded any of the original appropriations. I can tell you that I don't remember, and I, it's too hard to remote into my desktop from here and all that. But we are actually spending less than what had been originally appropriated. It's not significant, but it is less. So I think that's important. So the first item is so that we can actually pay the consultants as necessary. And the second item.
Before you go to the second and to the Capital category, can we need to vote on our amended?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
No, it's okay. But could we please have a vote on the amendment to the original motion?
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
I had a question. So I because I'd really like to have this voted on separate lines because I did not vote in favor of the contract to begin with. And so I don't want to be appear that I'm, so I don't, I guess I'll just have to no on this because I don't know what this vote means.
You can always move for separation on the underlying question. Once we amend these numbers, you can always move for separation.
So once we get, so we could go ahead, and I could vote yes to to amend these numbers, and then I will, that's what my question was going to be. Thank you. Oh, yes, of that.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKem?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Motion to amend passed six to zero.
So I'm just going to propose that we hear about all three categories, and then we can entertain any questions and other motions to divide things up.
Is that good? Do I get to just go?
Yeah. So Ms. Purdy, will you start with the second line? Yeah.
Certainly. That is the jail remodel security line. And that is to replace 80 locks in our current jail facility. And I actually want to step back a minute for you because the next two items, this item and the one that Mr. Evans will speak about, were items that had been initially placed as possible projects on the 2021 General Obligation Bond. And Counsel said, hey, why don't, why don't you guys look at some other options for the funding of these particular needs? So the, so we come before you today with the the request to replace 80 locks in the jail. And those, those locks that we're speaking about are just basically a grade above the ones we have in our homes. They were never designed for a jail facility. They were designed to be used for holding somebody for a short period of time. However, now, given the use of our of our facility, we have people who are using, you know, who are using these locks, who are there for much, for a regular length of stay as opposed to just for a few hours. And as such, what happens is, you know, when you're bored, and I would definitely be one of these people, I would have that lock all taken apart if I'm in there by myself, and that's what happens. And so I know that our management team has been repairing them and putting them back into place. However, this would allow us to replace those particular locks with with a lock that is that is safe for everybody. And then the next item, I would like to defer to Mr. Evans, as he has, he knows all there is to know about this next item.
When you say the next item, are you talking the next item on the agenda? Because I am getting a whopper job with all the different votes going on here.
I know. I'm talking about MBTs, the interview room, and the body cameras. It's all one line.
And that's part of the Capital Group.
It's it's that very bottom line, that the 363. Yeah.
Okay, so to break this down, there are three different sets of products that we're getting. Number one, it is time to replace all of the body worn cameras for the officers. We are switching over to Axon. So that amount to get body cams for all our officers. Now, that includes all the road deputies, and includes all the jail staff, and it includes the guys that are the process servers, these guys that, you know, go around and serve, serve, you know, different legal papers. In addition to the animal control people and the reserves, the deputy reserves. So the total for that is, and and so the way this is structured with Axon, it's a five year contract, but we're only talking about the first year. The first year for that is 145,458.81. Including with that also from Axon is a replacement to our interview room cameras. So within the Sheriff's Office, there are two rooms that they conduct interviews with suspects. There is also a room that they film more formal breathalyzer tests than what they do out of the field. And then also a camera out in the hall where I believe they do sobriety check, you know, like walk on a straight line type thing. We, that whole system has been in place for a number of years. The vendor has been increasingly difficult to work with on that. And so we are going to replace all of those and go to an Axon provided solution. The cost for the interview rooms is $19,152. So before I go on to the car computers that are the third element of this, I just wanted to say about the Axon solution, that one of the nice things about this actually, to me, even more important than the body cams, what we're getting with this deal, which is thrown in as part of the deal, is cloud based storage of all the video evidence. So essentially, that means that we will no longer be storing this voluminous chunk of video evidence on our local network. You know, essentially, right now, we have this ad hoc directory that the three different departments, the Sheriff's Department, the Prosecutor's Department, and the public defender all go into to get the evidence. You know, as the cameras become more sophisticated, the storage space for these files grows exponentially. And, you know, honestly, the video evidence from the Sheriff's Department accounts for about 40% of the network load. So this deal, all of that is going to be hosted as part of this deal in in the cloud, along with this pretty powerful search engine that will help the different departments find the evidence that they're looking for. Right now, they have to just kind of dig through this directory with hundreds of different large video files. It's really, it's, it's pretty barbaric in a way. So, so really, for me, the body cameras are just kind of secondary to being able to offload this incredible amount of storage and provide something that the law enforcement departments can use to do their job more efficiently. And then finally, as part of this capital amount, it is time to replace the MBTs that are in the cars. MBT stands for Mobile Data Terminal. It's basically just shorthand for the laptop that goes in cop cars, along with the car mount that goes with those. These are hardened desktops, I'm sorry, hardened laptops, which means they're supposed to be able to survive being subjected to greater than normal rigors. Our previous ones, we bought from Dell, we were told they were military spec. But we had a pretty high, like a 30% failure rate within the first six months of a lot of those. Apparently, the lid, the hinge on the lid kept flapping. They were not up to the mean streets of Monroe County, those militaries. They were not up to the mean streets of Monroe County, those military spec laptops. So we're hoping that by going with a brand name GTAC, we'll have better luck. The amount for that is one hundred ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred dollars. That is to replace all of the in-car laptops for the, the sheriff road deputies, the reserve, and a number of ancillary vehicles that the sheriff's department has. It's a lot of information to throw at you. I'm sure you have a lot of questions. So what, what kind of questions do you all have?
Well, thanks for the detailed explanation of, of the breakdown. It's a lot. What questions do we have from counsel? Jeff McKim?
So first of all, Mr. Evans, I, I know you put a huge amount of effort into selecting these components and services, and I completely trust your judgment and analysis here. Definitely support these appropriations. I think this is, I mean, we certainly as a council have already discussed the need for, for, for these components. And we also agree that PS Lit was a more appropriate funding source than, than a new bond since we already had adequate reserves in, in that fund. And so I, I, can you just go over again the, the terms of the, kind of of the agreement for the body cameras and the storage? Like, how much do we pay each year for how many years?
Yes, it is a five-year contract. Each year it is the same amount, which is one hundred and forty-five thousand, four fifty, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and eighty-one cents. So every five years, we, we pay those, we, we pay that amount. We get unlimited storage, so, you know, we're, we're not paying for that element of it.
If I may, I do want, I think it's important that counsel also recognizes that by approving this expenditure, the MD, the body cameras and the, the body cameras and the, what do we call them?
MDTs?
No, MBTs, it was straight out. Oh, what is it? What's the, what's the, oh, the, um, the interview room.
All right.
Those are on a five-year. So we will be budgeting beginning this year for the 2022 budget, one hundred and sixty-four thousand, six hundred and ten dollars and eighty-one cents, which will cover the cost of the body cameras and the interview rooms over the next five years.
And that essentially ensures that we're always going to have functioning body cameras and functioning equipment in the interview rooms.
Yes. Okay, so on the body cam question, the, the body cam package will include several extras that we'll keep in our fleet. So officer comes in and, and has a broken body cam. We give them a new one and they walk out the door and have a functioning body cam. And then we RMA that back to the company. Also, the package includes the, the holster worn activator. So if a officer pulls a, pulls their weapon, it triggers not only their body cam to start recording, but any other interagency body cams that are within a certain radius automatically turn on. And I believe that that also applies to, you know, BPD and the, you know, IU, you know, the IU officers.
Thank you.
Are there other questions from counsel on? Yes, Mr. McKim? Oh, no.
I'm sorry, I had a question from Ms. Purdy on the, on the services, but I didn't, I don't want to distract the conversation from the capital if others have questions on that.
Nope, go right ahead then.
So I just want to make sure I understand on the, on the services, all fifty-three thousand of, of fifty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-five for the contract reverted at the end of last year. So that was money that was already appropriated, not spent. It was appropriated for this purpose. It was intended to be spent, but it went back into the general fund in the cash.
That is correct, and I believe that there was much, there was more than the fifty-three thousand, and I don't remember it, and I left the office without writing it down. I actually think there was an appropriation in excess of sixty thousand dollars. But, um, yes, so the fifty-three thousand, oh, Kim might be able to tell you.
Yes, there was a remainder balance of sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars.
Thank you. Okay, well, as, as long as it's at least fifty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-five, I'm good.
Yes, thank you.
Other questions from counsel? Are there any?
So I move, we devote, divide the motion into two parts, a motion on the services category and a motion on the capital category.
Second.
All right, is there any discussion about the, the new motion?
Actually, technically, this motion's not debatable. We just vote.
Never mind then. No questions allowed? Let's vote, please.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero.
Okay, so now, um, we've divided it so we can just
Take a vote on.
Take a vote on the first one without needing to. Okay.
Yeah, you can call for public comment on each one of them individually, call for a vote done on each one if you wanted, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So yes, on the contractual portion, which is now all by its little lonesome, as.
I don't, I, it's actually the services portion.
Category.
Correct.
Services portion, are there any public questions or comments, I guess, mostly questions? Comments? Seeing none, please let's have a roll call vote on this.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
No.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Motion passed majority five to zero, five to one, I'm sorry.
So now we will consider the capital component of this agenda item. Are there any questions from the public, our guest comments from the public? Seeing none, let's have a roll call vote on this portion.
Counselor McKim?
Yes, sorry, I just wanted to have that number read for the record, just because there's a lot of confusion here. Can we read the number that we're voting on here? I have it at six hundred and sixty-three thousand, five hundred and ten. Does everybody agree?
Yes.
My apologies.
All right, Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Let's go, let's go ahead and move forward then on the agenda. We are at item eight, which is a request from the auditor's office.
Counsel, I move to approve the auditor's request for an additional appropriation in Fund one, zero, 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 dash, zero, 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 two, general fund auditor, in the amount of thirty-five thousand, seven hundred dollars in the services category.
Second.
Welcome, Ms. Gregory, again.
Thank you. So we are requesting the remaining not to exceed portion on our contract that we have with Hartman and Williams. Hartman and Williams helped us prepare our annual gap report. So when we budgeted this, for this year, we were hopeful that we could spend less. We anticipated spending a bit less, however, that has not been the case. Unfortunately, we will need the remaining max for the contract. So we have, we do have an outstanding invoice currently.
All right, counsel, are there any questions on this item? Is there any public comment? Okay, may I have a roll call vote then?
On the motion to approve an additional appropriation in Fund one thousand, zero, 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 two. Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Mc, McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous, six, zero.
Thank you, counselors.
Thank you. We are now moving to item number nine, which is a request then from our aviation department.
Counsel, I move to approve the aviation department's request for an additional appropriation in Fund four-nine-zero-nine, dash, zero, 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 airport band debt in the amount of sixty-three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and sixty-one cents in the services category.
Second.
And do we have someone joining us to talk about this?
I have not seen Carlos on the call, so if someone would like to raise their hand, I can allow them to talk.
What about Jeff Cockrell?
Yeah, if you give me a second, I think I, I'm aware of it, but I just haven't reviewed it for tonight.
Just to give you an idea, what, if, if you want me to try. What happened was they did not appropriate the correct amount. They came, they were there, they came early in the spring and appropriated an amount, and there was some confusion on how much they were supposed to. They thought they had already appropriated it, but they only appropriated just like a thousand dollars or something like that, I can't remember. So this is just to appropriate the entire line so that they can pay their debt.
Yeah.
Well, okay.
And it really, it's just the interest on the debt.
Yes. Yeah, it's the, yeah, interest part.
Right, okay. Are there, yes, Counsel McKim?
Oh, I mean, I think this particular request is straightforward, but I, I do think that at some point, not tonight, but in the future with Mr. Cockrell and, and Mr. Lavery, we ought to, I think, have a discussion about how we might plan on moving forward with respect to the, in the airport debt in general, what's going to happen when the ban ends and, and potential bonding afterwards. So I think, you know, we might want to have that in a, schedule that for, for a future work session in the near future.
So is that?
Please.
Counselin' room McKim, is that two million or one point nine or something like that? I forget what the total dollar amount we have to come up with.
I think it's a million and a quarter, but it might be a little bit more than that.
Okay.
That's my memory, is that it's between a million and a quarter and a million and a half.
And that, if that's coming up, what, at the end of next year that we have to have that money?
I think it's the, I think we need to have it, it's going to graduate. I think this is the fifth year of the five-year ban, so I think we need to, the decision for that needs to be made, made this fall.
We need to just get right on that. Yeah, right away.
That's my request for a work session agenda. I don't mind that.
And, and I apologize, I thought that this had been discussed when they were talking about the possible bond list in the April or May meeting. That there was, that this, this is part of that calculation, but, but I'll make sure that you guys, we'll, we'll have something for you at your August work session.
And we have the cash on hand to pay that. And rather than trying to borrow and pay more debt, more interest on top of the interest, there's not cash that we could do.
Just, just to confirm Mr. Cockrell's numbers, the, the total project cost, at least according to Gateway, is, is one million, two hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars. So, yeah, about one point, twenty-six million, one and a quarter million.
Nice job, Mr. Cockrell.
Sometimes I remember things.
Are there any other questions or comments from counsel on this particular item, which is correcting the appropriation for paying the, the band interest? Okay, is there any public comment? Seeing none, if we could please have a roll call vote?
On the motion to approve an additional appropriation in Fund forty-six oh-nine, dash, zero, 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 zero. Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion approved unanimous, six, zero.
Thank you. And now we are at item ten on our agenda, which is a presentation from Health Net. And I believe Nancy Richmond, hi, you're here. Yay, thank you so much for waiting so long.
That's fine. This will be a very quick agenda item, so you can all sort of take a breath and, and you can move on to the rest of your meeting. So you have my report in your packets, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here as I am every year. This year is my second presentation as the representative from Health Net, Bloomington Health Center. We have had a really interesting year in 2020, as you can imagine, as my report says. So just to remind people, Health Net is a nonprofit federally qualified health center with the mission to improve lives with compassionate healthcare and support services regardless of ability to pay. So for the past eighteen months, the Bloomington Health Center, or the Health Net Bloomington Health Center, has been busy welcoming new patients. We are, I am really thrilled that, you know, my vision of becoming acquired by Health Net, bringing a federally qualified health center to Monroe County and Bloomington, really, it's really clear to me that that is in fact what, what is happening, you know, despite the pandemic. That obviously the first year was unique in several ways. You know, we had just been acquired, Vim had just been acquired by Health Net. The first two months, we were challenged with a major facility renovation that we had hoped would be done before the acquisition was finalized. Then we were, we were, at the same time, we were recruiting staff and providers. And then we were hit by the pandemic. So year one was just not what we had bargained for. And still, in the course of year one, we had over fourteen hundred unique patients, which is more than Vim had in any given year, which I was really pleased about. Interestingly, that the data from, even though we're still in a pandemic, the first six months, date of 2021, shows that we have already had almost twelve hundred unique patients. So in six months, we're almost at half of, I'm sorry, we're almost at, almost at, halfway through the year, we're almost at the fully what we had for the entire year last year. So we're going to blow last year out of the water in 2021, again, despite the pandemic, which is really interesting to me, that people are starting to seek medical care again. They're starting to feel, and even though, you know, the They're starting to feel, and even though, you know, they're still wearing masks at the center, we still have, you know, all the plastic dividers, we still have air filters, we still have a separate entrance for patients who have any kind of COVID-related symptoms. We have almost, you know, we're, we're on path to almost double our patient volume, which is really quite interesting. A couple of things that we are really excited to share with you about 2021. Tomorrow, a full-time pediatrician starts, which we are thrilled about. We started seeing kids a year ago, so July 1st is when HealthNet opened up to children. So, and now that we, and we've been seeing kids, but now that we have a full-time pediatrician, obviously we'll be marketing to families, to parents, to the school district and so forth. That, I think, will really help our kids' data take off. We also, as I said in the report, we're really, really excited that with money from the HERSA American Rescue Plan, funding for health centers, we've decided to set up a mini clinic at the Shalom Center. HealthNet has one of the most extensive homeless initiative programs in the state. I'm not sure if we've ever talked about that in, when I've met with you before. And so we're beginning to bring that to Bloomington and to Monroe County, which we're really excited about. And this year, because of HERSA federal money for COVID relief initiatives at federally qualified health centers, we're able to do a lot of things that might have been postponed into the future. So that will provide a really small, comprehensive, I saw, primary care, medical little clinic on-site at Shalom. And the report talks a little bit about that the task will be to conduct health screenings, identify chronic disease risk factors, really keep people out of the emergency department, and help them find a medical home. Not necessarily at HealthNet, I mean, we really are committed to patient choice, so wherever they want to go, we'll make their resources available to them, and so they can get labs and radiology if needed and so forth, wherever they want to, to do that. I have visions of, for years, I've been talking about street psychiatry and street medical services. They do that at HealthNet in Indy. And so fingers crossed that we can bring that to Monroe County. It's been one of the gaps in services that I've long been talking about with Forest. And, I mean, right now, we can't find a psychiatrist to work in Bloomington, let alone to do street psychiatry. So that's a goal for the future. And another really exciting initiative that the commissioners, our line item in the commissioners' budget will also help us fund, is mobile health. That in May of this year, HealthNet ordered their first mobile health unit. And so the expectation is the build-out for that will be five to seven months, so we're hoping that that will be on the road in early 2022. And the plan is that that will be, that will serve rural Monroe and Morgan Counties to begin with. So a lot of the unincorporated towns, a lot of the rural communities in Monroe County that don't have the same access to medical care that Bloomington residents do, we will bring a unit to them. Again, help them get a regular, and again, the, the details aren't worked out yet, but my understanding is we'll have a regular schedule, you know, that, you know, Wednesday mornings will be in Steinsville or whatever, that people can count on, begin to develop a regular patient load from the rural communities. And then again, help them to find access to, if they, if they need it, to a provider of their choice for longer-term follow-up and, and so forth. Although they could be followed up at the mobile clinic, that would be fine as well. That would be, so we're expecting almost 2,000 people, about 1,800 people in year one. And again, so the, the mission there is focused on improving the health of those people who are both impoverished and living in remote areas without easy access to medical or mental health services. So mental health will also, through telehealth, will also be a service that the mobile clinic will provide. Because, as I did research into those areas, I mean, the outcomes, the health outcomes are not good in rural communities in Monroe and, and Morgan County. And the goal would be to help those outcomes become, become better. You know, because there are disparities, not just based on race and ethnicity, but location is, is also, you know, a barrier to access. I also wanted to mention that, and I don't know if I did in the report or not, but when Volunteers in Medicine dissolved, the board gifted some money to the HealthNet Foundation for an account called a fund called the Vim Patient Assistance Fund. And then also made a significant endowment gift that's being held by the community foundation here in Bloomington, the distributions of which will go to the HealthNet Foundation into this Vim Patient Assistance Fund. So what happens, even though HealthNet has a sliding discount scale and takes insurances that Vim, you know, did not, when we have to refer people to specialists outside of the clinic, or we have to refer for, you know, additional diagnostic radiology tests, or specialists, oncologists, or colonoscopies, or mammograms, or any of those services that HealthNet Bloomington doesn't yet provide on-site, those costs might be prohibitive for many of our low-income and particularly uninsured patients. So that fund ensures that patients can apply for financial assistance to pay medical bills that are, that are part of their medical treatment plan at HealthNet. So again, the Vim mission of making sure that nobody is ever without medical care because of inability to pay carries forward into the HealthNet Bloomington Health Center, which I am really so pleased about, and I think that was really forward-thinking of the Vim board to not just, when we dissolve, but to dissolve in such a way that we are perpetuating the Vim mission essentially forever. Because of the permanent endowment at the community foundation, the distributions will go into that account. We will continue to raise money for that account and continue to help patients access services. We also, I just want to make sure you know that we have money from the Bloomington Health Foundation for transportation. So if you hear in your travels of people in the rural areas that can't get to Bloomington Health Center, please let us know, because we will give them a gas card, we will send an Uber. Nobody should be stranded for, you know, for lack of transportation who needs medical care. So we have it covered, we provide support services, you know, we provide health education, dental, mental health, I mean, we have it covered. And I'm very excited about what we've done so far. Our data show that we are reaching the people we intended to reach, that right now, over 50% of our population is insured, so that's not the population Vim could see. So that's people experiencing homelessness who have insurance, that have a healthy Indiana plan, that's people with Medicaid, people with Medicare, again, a population Vim could not treat, and commercial insurance, commercial is small, but we're building that. So I, I can leave it there, you have the report, but I think that your support has been, is so appreciated, I'm so grateful, and I'm just delighted that in spite of the pandemic, I think that Bloomington Health Center is doing exactly what I had hoped it would do when, you know, I had the vision of being acquired by a federally qualified health center.
Thank you for that update, and thank you for all you're doing for our community. That's, I'm just kind of overwhelmed hearing all of it and really impressed. I will let my colleagues make some comments. Counsel McKim?
I'm just kind of blown away also by the, the scope of services that you've managed to, to pull together here. Thank you for the presentation. Just a quick question, you know, just on average, what would it take, how long would it take for a new patient who needs to see a provider to be able to see that provider?
Forty-eight hours.
Okay, so we're not talking like four-month wait or anything?
Maybe even a day. Oh, let me also mention that we have created, to help serve people experiencing homelessness, we have created walk-in hours, which is not what HealthNet typically does, but we now have two hours a day for people who can walk in. And also, our front desk people are calling the shelters, Wheeler, Shalom, Middleway House, New Hope, to say, do you have anybody who needs an appointment today? We have walk-in hours. So we are making our services available, we do not have a waiting list. We need and want patients to come, and in fact, our patient numbers are low because of the pandemic. They're starting to, to increase again, as you can see by our numbers. I mean, we're almost at, you know, six months in at what we served last year, but there is not a, a wait, Jeff. And so please let people know, we are now, as things have opening up, are getting to the health fairs. We were at the Children's Expo last week, I'll be at the Redeemer Health Fair, Redeemer Church Health Fair this Saturday, we'll be at the Pride Fest, any health fair that is still open this year, we will be there. Jack Hopkins money, we will be doing some billboards and bus advertising, we will, we need to get the word out, because after a year, because of the pandemic, people need to know that we're there. And people are still saying, what happened to Vim? And what's HealthNet? And this is crazy, at 18 months, we need to get, really get the word out. We're there, we're seeing people, and we're ready to welcome people.
That's fantastic. Well, we'll do what we can to get the word out.
Thank you.
Counselor Deckard, and then Counselor Hawke?
Thank you very much, and thanks for waiting through our, our meeting to bring us some great news. And this, this was awesome to hear, and I just have a comment, I don't have a question, if you want to make a comment to that, but I remember when you first talked about this a couple of years back, and I was always partial to Vim and near and dear to my heart, as I know it was to you. And I thought, oh, you know, I get nervous about changing something that could affect something, but this is mind-blowing how different this has been even with a pandemic. And we don't always get good news, but this is a message we can share out there. And I just, thanks for having that vision, that is not easy to do, and, and you've blown my socks off on this one, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Yes, it, it moves me, it, it moves me. You know I'm deeply committed to medical care for people who aren't usually served, and I'm just, I am blown away myself by, by, that this, this really was what the community needed, and, and, and we did it, and I'm, I'm so happy. And HealthNet is, really was the perfect partner. I mean, as I get to know the people, they are patient-driven. I could not be happier with their commitment to patient care and caring compassion. I mean, they are like our, our Vim sisters and brothers. I mean, it could not have been more perfect. And we lucked out, because we, you know, you, you don't know when you choose a partner.
That's awesome.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes, I wished, while I was waiting, then I'd gone downstairs and got the, off my wall, because we framed it, a friend of mine framed it for me, and I keep it over my desk. And it was when we first started, and it wasn't called Vim at the time, I don't recall what, what was called, but it was many years ago. And we, it was a tough choice, because we took the money that we sort of had, thought we would use for raises, a small raise for county employees. We took that money and started what was the very beginning of this. Nancy, do you remember what that was called?
Yes.
Do you remember that story?
Health Access Program, right? It was a nurse-managed program from Bloomington Hospital.
Yes.
Yep, tap.
And it was, it was a tough vote, because as you know, I always want to support our county employees. But it was so important to start this. So sometimes you just don't know when you're sowing that first seed, what's going to grow. So I just, I just wanted to share that story.
It's, it's a wonderful story, thank you for sharing that, it's great to, it's great to hear that.
Are there any other questions or comments from Counsel? Well, yeah, my, my heart is full just hearing about this, and I know you're really, you're really involved in making sure that, that you're reaching out into the community. I know we've got the Community Voices Project that CGM's doing, and I've seen you there. And I think especially with the housing insecurity, we, we've just got a lot of things going on, even our criminal justice reform report, I think touches on the same issues that you're addressing. And really, I'm looking forward to seeing you as an even more powerful resource in our community, so.
Let me just, that reminds me that I called a meeting next week with some people to talk about whether or not Bloomington HealthNet would have the capacity to do enrollment, insurance enrollment outreach into the community, such as the prisons. And I know you've been studying the prisons, and the commissioners have been studying the prisons. And one of the needs would be to see how we can get people ready to be, to get medical care, so that there's, they don't lose medical care when they're imprisoned, and, and they're ready when they come out to get medical care. So I, I don't know that we'd be ready to bring medical care to the prison, but I'm hoping we can bring enrollment services. I don't know if that's true or not, but I have called a meeting to at least discuss it with our enrollment team and see what's possible. Because I think that would also help the continuum of care in Monroe County, if we could help with that linkage.
I agree, I agree, that's exciting. And Counselor Hawke has?
That's lovely, thank you, Counselor Hawke.
Clipping.
That's fantastic that you still have that.
It's, it's so old, but I'm going to tell you the date. It's under our opinion column of the Herald Times, September 1, 1992.
Oh my gosh!
It says clinic funding deserves praise. And so this is one of the proudest moments that I've had.
That's 15 years.
It hangs over my desk.
That's wonderful, thank you so much, I love that.
Just thought I'd share it.
Thank you.
It's fantastic. I wanted to make sure, is there any public comment on this item? I see nothing in the participant list. Thanks again, I really appreciate it. And let, you know, let us know how we can give more support to you, and if there's something we can talk about with the, something in the jail, or that would be fantastic.
Very good, thank you very much.
All right.
Take care.
We are going to now move to item 11, which, oh, we have a resolution to read.
Counsel, I move to approve Resolution 2021-33, which is an extension of the inter-local agreement made with the Monroe County Trustees Corporation to deliver relief from immediate and longer-term COVID-19 impact from the resolution. Resolution 2021-33, a resolution to approve an inter-local extension to the agreement with the Monroe County Township Trustees Corporation. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Monroe County, Indiana as follows. We find that the attached inter-local agreement, which is incorporated herein as Exhibit A, is necessary to serve the residents of Monroe County. To better understand the city of Bloomington's proposed annexation, we hereby approve the inter-local agreement approved this 7th day of July, 2021, by the Board of Commissioners of Monroe County, Indiana. I've got the wrong one, I think.
Wait, why? Why is this annexation keep?
Hmm.
So.
I don't think that's the one I wanted.
If, if, if you don't mind, I could read what the now therefore should read.
I would appreciate that very much.
We find that the attached inter-local agreement, which is incorporated herein as Exhibit A, is necessary to serve the residents of Monroe County, period. We hereby approve the inter-local agreement.
I move that as read by Mr. Cockrell.
Yes, and I, and maybe I could, I can make this as straightforward as possible. This is before you, because all interlocals either have to go before the fiscal body or go to the state, the state attorney general for approval. Last fall, we, we had an agreement with our township trustees to help them provide support throughout this COVID to the, to their residents. That was extended. That was initially supposed to go through January 1 of last year. It was then extended to go through July 1 of this year. And, and now this, all this does is just extend it as long as we're under a pandemic or until January 1 of next year. So we're just kind of extending the agreement that's already in place. We're not changing the dollar amounts in any way. It's just pushing it down the road because we're still in a pandemic.
Okay. And that makes perfect sense. I want to confirm that what, what Jeff Cockrell just read is indeed the correct text for Resolution 2021-33. Because I have what, what Mr. Deckard has as well. And so I just want to make sure that.
This is deja vu all over again. We just did this.
This is page nineteen or twenty-nine of the packet. Is that correct? We find, yeah.
I'm not sure what happened. Hold on. I, I must have copied the wrong one.
I'm looking at the version on the, on the website that was, on the county website that was published to the
Yeah.
public. And on page, I think 22, appears to have the correct, the correct text.
I think I put, I moved the wrong one into the folder. And so I used the wrong one for the script. That is totally my fault.
Okay, that's.
No worries. I, I, I should have cut that.
Um, yeah, any number of us could. So we will be then voting on it as read by Mr. Cockrell.
And I would just say, that's just another sign we're still in the pandemic.
Sure are.
Are there any other questions, concerns, comments from counsel? Yes.
Sorry, how much is, how much is still in that, in the line that, and in the agreement that's unspent?
I am uncertain, but I think Angie Purdy would have the answer to that.
I actually put it in the chat. We actually have $250,000 in that line. So it was originally appropriated. I did put this one up. For at $300,000. And we, this, this year, had given them an additional $25,000.
And I would say that I know through the end of last year, the total agreement is 200,000. I know through the end of last year, we had, we had afford, I believe, 100,000. So that'd be a total of 125,000 had been spent pursuant to this agreement, which still leaves 75,000. And again, it's, it's through the governor's order, which could end as early as two days from now, or could get extended again. We just don't know. That's why we kept that language in there, kind of an either or kind of situation.
Got it.
Other questions? Is there any public comment on this item? No public comment. Could we have a roll call vote on this, please?
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor McKem?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we are to item number 12. And this is the recommendation from the Sophia Travis Community Service Grants Committee, which is always an exciting time. This committee was led by Counselor Cheryl Munson, Counselor Deckard, and I also served on the committee, as did two citizen appointments. And that includes Josh Johnson and Ryan Boyce. And we have Ryan here to read the list of awardees and the amounts. Counselor Munson, would you like to give us an update before Ryan gets started?
I don't have an update to, to give, but I would like to say thank you to the committee members who worked very diligently. And this is, this is a substantial job to re, to review thirty-eight applications, making requests for support for projects that are always in excess of the amount of money that we have available in the fund, substantially in excess. And we have an excellent resolution ready for Mr. Deckard. And Mr. Boyce is, is also ready. So just a big thank you to each of the committee members.
Great, thanks. Go ahead, Ryan.
Great, thanks. So the Sophia Travis Community Service Grant Awards and Committee recommends the following awards for Alexandra's Food Drive. For supplies and printing materials for their twenty, 2022 Food Drive, the committee recommends $2,250. For the All Options Hoosier Diaper Program, providing diapers and diaper cream to parents in need, the committee recommends $3,410. For Amethyst House Residential Food at their Substance Use Treatment Center, the committee recommends $3,050. For Area 10 Agency on Aging, at the Endright East Active Living Community Center Funding, the committee recommends $4,630. For Beacon and their COVID-19 Homeless Prevention Project, the committee recommends $7,060. For Big Brothers, Big Sisters of South Central Indiana, DEI and Recruitment Mentoring for One-to-One, the committee recommends $5,080. For the Boys and Girls Clubs of Bloomington, for flood damage recovery at their Lincoln Street Club, the committee recommends $5,180. For Catholic Charities of Bloomington Counseling Services, trauma training and expansion project of their existing team of counselors, the committee recommends $2,370. To Centerstone of Indiana, their Welcome Home to Centerstone Program that focuses on housing homeless youth and moving them to independence, the committee recommends $3,380. For the Community Justice and Mediation Center, their program outreach materials, supplies, and for training scholarships, the committee recommends $2,440. For a food purchase to the Community Kitchen of Monroe County, the committee recommends $4,488. For the Courage to Change Sober Living Fresh Start Rent Scholarship Fund, the committee recommends $2,580. For Grace Center Incorporated's Food Purchase, we recommend $2,240. For the Hoosier Hills Food Bank COVID Food Project 2021, the committee recommends $3,990. For Hoosiers Feeding the Hungry, their meat, the need meat processing costs, the committee recommends $2,620. For Hotels for Hope Incorporated, their office space costs, the committee recommends $2,830. For the Indiana Recovery Alliance, their Sharps Disposal Community Safety Program, the committee recommends $5,420. For Indiana Solar for All Center for Sustainable Living, their Solar for Monroe County Program, the committee recommends $3,990. For the Lotus Education and Arts Foundation, the Lanterns Remix Program, part of the annual Lotus Festival, the committee recommends $2,830. For Bloomington Meals on Wheels, Groceries to Go, a new food delivery program, the committee recommends $3,580. For Middleway House, they're rekeying new wings to their emergency shelter, we recommend $3,620. For Midway Music Speaks, the Girls Rock Bloomington Camp and Workshop Series, the committee recommends $2,420. For the Monroe County Humane Association Outreach Transportation Vehicle Grant, the committee recommends $4,120. For Monroe County United Ministries, their Maintaining Self-Sufficiency Program, the committee recommends $3,500. For Mother Hubbard's Covered, Emergency Food Pantry Support, the committee recommends $5,580. For New Hope for Families Housing First for Families Program, the committee recommends $5,280. For the New Leaf, New Life Agency Transition Support Materials for Recently Incarcerated Individuals, the committee recommends $2,630. For Planned Parenthood, Patient Financial Assistance for Preventative Healthcare Services, the committee recommends $3,580. For Sojourn House Incorporated, the committee recommends $4,280 for their residential and outreach program renovation. For the South Central Community Action Program, JT Memorial Health Fund, the committee recommends $4,080. For Bloomington St. Vincent de Paul Plastic Dressers for Children Program, the committee recommends $3,040. For Susie's Place, new furniture for the Susie's Place Advocacy Center, the committee recommends $3,220. For Team First Book Monroe County, for their increasing diversity and inclusion through books program, the committee recommends $2,580. For the Bloomington Project School Place Project, for tools and supplies for teaching children how to build structures, we recommend $2,420. For WFHB Bloomington Community Radio, the live event broadcasting and remote broadcasting technology budget, the committee recommends $2,520. For Wheeler Missions Intervention Services at their Shelter Diversion, the committee recommends $3,980. For Writing for a Change Foundation, the Young Women's Summer Writing Camps 2022, the committee recommends $1,920. And for Youth First, Monroe County Youth First Social Work Program, the committee recommends $2,820.
Counsel, I make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-35, Award of Sophia Travis Community Service Grants, which reads, now therefore be it resolved that the Monroe County Council's total distribution of the Sophia Travis Community Service Grants Fund for 2021 for recipients, as read by Ryan Boyce, is $135,400.
Second.
Can I ask one question? Are, is the committee entirely sure that every one of those recipients is a 501(c)(3)? Because I think that was a requirement this year, was it not?
I believe you're right. It was part of the application process that they provide the, the number associated with that status, I believe. Is there a specific concern?
I, I did not think that Hotels for Homeless, last time they applied, that they were a 501(c)(3). They were associated with a separate 501(c)(3). So I just wanted to make sure that that.
They checked the box. And they've changed their name. Hold on just a second.
They did reorganize. Counselor Munson?
Yes, I would like to, to announce that Hotels for Homeless changed their name to Hotels for Hope Incorporated. And they did list a nonprofit tax ID number.
Good. Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was one of the requirements that we asked on the application, and everyone supplied their tax ID number on the application.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Ryan, so much for reading that. It's a long list. And let's see if we have any questions of Counsel McKem.
Yes, and there's also a procedural question. I know this comes up every year, but that's, how do we want to handle voting on individual awards separately? In particular, I have a conflict, a potential conflict of interest on one of them, which I would like to pass on Women Writing for a Change Foundation, as my wife was one of the requesters.
That seems fair. We can separate that one. Counselor Munson?
I would be glad to offer a motion to that effect. I move we separate Women Writing for a Change Proposed Award, Recommended Award.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments regarding that, the separation of that award? Okay, could we have a roll call vote on pulling the one award out from the rest of the list?
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKem?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson? Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Yes, there you go.
Motion passed six to zero.
Great, thank you. Are there, so we're now going to, how do we do this? I have a procedural question. Can, do we discuss everything and then have two votes, or do we just discuss? Okay. Are there any comments, other comments or questions from the council? Counsel McKem, your hand is still up, but I think maybe if you want to comment, that's great. No? Okay. We can take a comment from the public if there is some. I have completely lost track of my, there we go, participants list. Are there any public comments? There are none that I can see. That makes this amazingly easy. So with, with that, then could we have the first vote, which we can vote on the separate one, except for Counsel Munson? Yes, what do you need?
Um, I need a few minutes because I'm pulling that out of the total, so I'm not ready yet.
Okay.
Talk amongst yourselves.
Okay.
Okay, Counsel Munson?
I'll talk. I think we may need to modify the resolution. I'll talk. I think we may need to modify the resolution. And that may be what Ms. Shell is doing right now.
What do you mean? I'm not following you.
The resolution has a number of specifics in it. Do those need to be changed?
All I'm going to do is make it a split resolution. And we'll handle, you know, just like we would, we did with a request that Counselor Hawk had done in the past. And so there'll be a total for A and then a total for B. Okay. Just a moment, please. Okay, so you will have Resolution 2021-35A will have a total distribution of $133,480.
Can you read that back one more time?
Yes. Resolution 2021-35A, And then on Resolution 2021-35B, as in boy, that resolution total distribution will be $1,920. Writing for a Change Foundation, correct? Okay.
Yes, Writing for a Change Foundation for $1,920 makes sense. The total of the two resolutions should be $135,400.
$100.
Correct?
Okay.
Okay, and do you want new, we've already split it out. Now that you've read the totals into the record, can we proceed to just vote on those two as described?
You need to vote on A and then you vote on B.
Okay, so if we could have the roll call vote then for 2021-35A, which is the the $133,480. Yeah, thank you.
And did the public have an opportunity to comment?
They did.
You asked for public comment?
I did.
Amazing.
That's what I said. I believe exactly what I said afterwards.
All right, Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Which one is this one?
The large one.
2021-35A, it's for all of the organizations except for the write-in. No? Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed majority five to one.
Okay.
Put the next one.
Counselor Deckard, do you want to read it? I kind of stole your thunder last time.
Oh, I like it when you steal my thunder. Let me, so for Resolution, Resolution B, I move, I move that we approve Resolution 2021-35B for a total of $1,920 for Writing for a Change.
Second.
Go ahead, Megan.
All right, Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Motion passed majority five to zero to one.
Well, thank you. That is, that is that. We've done it again this year. That's fantastic. Thank you. We will move on to item number 13 now on our agenda, which is an update on our boards and commissions. We still have an opening on our women's commission. And I am unaware of any specific restrictions. I know some of our commissions have, well, geographic or other types of restrictions on them. I'm unaware of any for the women's commission. And so, please, if you're in the public and at all, all interested in serving on a board of commissioners, this is a wonderful opportunity. It's a very active group and we'd appreciate it. This would be just completing a current term that expires in January with perhaps the opportunity to re-up. You can find the application on the Monroe County website and submit it there as well. That said, we are on to council comments. Do we have any comments from council members this evening? Everybody's quiet. It's been a long meeting. Counselor Hawk?
Yes, I would just like to call everyone's attention to an opinion on the opinion page of the Herald Times a few days ago. I think it was the 22nd. And I think it was a different way, perhaps a new way, but I think it's something we should just read and give some consideration to. And that's having to do with bail amounts was one of the points for someone who'd be charged with a felony if they already had a conviction for a felony. And their reasoning behind it was that they had a huge percentage, and I wish I had it in front of me so I'd be quoting them word for word. So I just invite you all to take a look at that. I did try to share it. Having to do with the murder rate in Indianapolis. I think they were just saying Indianapolis, but maybe throughout the state. And how there was a large percentage of that that the victim was somebody who committed felonies. And the person who perpetrated the crime was also had previous convictions for felonies. And I'm thinking that's not the direction we were headed. But it seems to me that we need to at least hear that out because the person who wrote the opinion column is certainly not, when you read it, you recognize the person's name. What is it? The State House files? I forget what the name of the paper is. But he's certainly not somebody you would think of as being ultra-conservative or anything of the sort. So I just think it's something we need to just open our minds. This is, the world is changing. So much is changing. And we need to just recognize that we don't have all the answers.
Okay, thank you. I know that Counsel Munson raised your hand, but we had also something from Ms. Shell. So I'll have Ms. Shell go first and then Counsel Munson.
Good evening, counsel, and I do apologize again for that resolution mix-up. I have no idea what happened, so I do apologize for that. What I want to do is I want to just update you briefly on the 2020 budget workbooks have gone out to all the departments. And with those instructions, I've asked them to talk with, meet with, you know, however you want to do it, with their council liaisons to go over their budgets, you know, and talk about, that way you kind of have a heads up what's going on. And I think that's a good connection that you guys can do, you know, meet with your people, that kind of thing, look at their budgets. And then encourage them, if they have any questions, to give me a call. You know, I am more than happy to help them with, especially if they seem to transfer a lot or if they come in and make additional requests frequently in some of the same lines, you know, let, help me, allow, have them, allow me to help them with that so that, you know, we can do a better budget for it. And the other thing is, we are very, we're nearing the end of July and the WIS study has on the final leg and they're proposing that they will have it ready. And so we are preparing to have the job description and salary compensation report presented to PAC at August the 3rd. And so we should be receiving that information, hopefully, the end of this week. And that way it'll be available for the PAC meeting. And let's see, the last thing then is we've got Colby, our intern. And he's going to be leaving us here shortly. And so I wanted to give him the opportunity to speak to you about what he's been, you know, and his experience in the council.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity for me to speak tonight and thank all of you guys. For those of you who haven't met me yet, my name's Colby. I'm a rising sophomore at IU studying law and public policy and history. And I've been the council intern since towards the beginning of May. And at the end of this week, it'll be my last day. So I asked Kim if I could have a couple of minutes just to thank you guys for everything. I know that we just went through a very long meeting and I expect you guys will respect brevity. So I will aim for that. When I began working at the courthouse, I was really taken aback by the beauty of the building. And every day I tried to make it a goal for myself not to take it for granted. I tried to take in the idiosyncrasies of the downtown area and the innate qualities of the courthouse as I walked in every day from the parking lot. But more importantly, however, I discovered something even better inside, something that can be more easily overlooked than I think it is sometimes than the massive, beautiful and historic courthouse. And that's all of the public servants who work inside of that courthouse who I've been working with for the past couple of months. Two of them who I want to highlight and give special thank yous to are Margie and Kim. Kim, you were a joy to work with every day. With every job that you gave me and every task, you were always sure to give me a wide-angle lens and give me a wider view of how whatever I was doing would affect the other areas of the county. I do also really want to tell you how much I appreciate you being open to all my questions and having a heart of a teacher and always finding ways to fill me in on new information surrounding the inner workings of the county and the bureaucracy that surrounds some of it. Margie, I'm forever thankful to one of my professors, Paul Humke, for connecting us. You've been a pleasure to work with and you've been a great teacher to me also. Just even teaching me how to better navigate the code in a more effective way or talking me through some seemingly nebulous statutes. It's been a thrill to learn about the way that law is applied in practice in the county by your side. And finally, I want to thank the council alongside Margie and Kim for offering me the opportunity to do real and substantial work. I feel grateful to have worked on many projects, including the WIS salary study, the criminal justice study, doing research for you all regarding funding of various institutions, including the library and studying the practices of the Department of Corrections here in Monroe County. Additionally, I've been given the opportunity to write memos for different offices, not the least of which was the Otter's Office's role in regards to annexation. All of this to say, I'll be walking out of this internship a more enriched citizen, one who is prepared to bring the skills that I have acquired here back to Indiana University as I continue my studies and pursue my career. Once more, I owe a great debt to the council for allowing me this opportunity. And if I can be of any service to any of you personally or for the county, please do let me know and I would be very happy to help you in any way that I can. So thank you all very, very much.
Thank you, Colby.
Thank you, Colby. That's a really
Thank you, Colby.
Fantastic speech. Love it. Future politician on our hands there.
It was awesome, didn't I?
You did. You did. You came very highly recommended and definitely impressed us with your work. So please don't be a stranger.
I do very much appreciate that, so thank you very much.
Terrific, thanks. Kim? Are there anything else from you?
Does anybody have any questions about, you know, where we're at in the budget process or anything like that before I sign off?
Do we have the notice yet of what the circuit breaker amount is? We're supposed to hear that by the, what, by the 30th, right?
August 1st. I haven't looked today, but.
I looked earlier and didn't see it.
Okay.
Page, but you know, I might have missed.
No, but then I do have the review already on the agenda for, you know, the estimated taxes and levies for the council. They have to do that as a requirement at the beginning of the of August, their first meeting of August. So I'm trying to stay on top of getting you guys all that information as soon as it comes out, so.
Okay. Any other questions for Kim? Great, thanks, Kim.
You're welcome.
Counsel Munson?
Thank you. I wanted to say a few words that didn't get mentioned earlier when we talked about the Sofia Travis Grants. And that is, the grant applicants numbered 38 different organizations. They requested nearly $260,000 in support. And we were able to fund $135,400, roughly, roughly half, slightly more than half. And the committee did their work alongside much work done by the staff of the council office. So this didn't get mentioned before, but a big thank you to Kim Shell, Colby Licker and Megan Miller for your help. It made our work, it made our work run smoothly. So that's greatly appreciated. And for the public, if you would like to know more about the grant awardees and their projects, there are applications that are posted on the county council website along with the award amounts. And I hope you will take a look to see what all these wonderful organizations are doing to make Monroe County a wonderful place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other council comments this evening? Yes, Counselor Deckard?
And you couldn't say all that without thanking Cheryl Munson for her leadership on PS Lit. For those of us that went through that and those of you that have served on a committee and subcommittee with Cheryl, it is an absolute treat for us. And I wish I had Cheryl leading everything I do on a day-to-day basis. She, she was, as Colby said earlier, talking about teachers and teachers' hearts. Cheryl makes that process easy for committee members so that they can get into the details they need to get into to really see these 38 incredible organizations. And that was a real pleasure to serve with you, Cheryl. Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
Completely agree.
My honor.
Well said. Anyone else? Any more comments? Okay, I think we might be adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody.